Hello, folks. Don, could you be my audio test for the night? Can you hear us? Perfect. And can you say something so that we can check it?
Can you hear me?
Perfect. Thank you. All right, mic start.
Thank you, Councilor Wazza.
But of course.
All right, it is six o'clock PM and I'll call this regular Berry City Council meeting to order this Tuesday, December 19th. The council present tonight include Councilor Dearing with fresh haircut, Councilor Shawn Bell, Councilor Booton, Councilor Wazza, Councilor Stockwell, and Councilor Lozon joining us, joining with us from staff. We have the city manager, Charlie Castro, clerk treasurer Dawes, assistant city manager, Don Monahan, Jeff, Chris, Keith, Joe. Big crew today. All right, and, and tonight's agenda is available online in the back of the room. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, both which are available online. Welcome, everybody who's joining us online and here in the room. The meet, to those of us joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. We offer online access as a convenience and we will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. Please remain muted if you haven't been called on and you can raise your hand to signal if you'd like to speak to an item business this evening. If you're here in the room, just raise your hand and you'll have to come forward and speak into the microphone so that the recording equipment can hear and people online can hear. I'll call in speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. As always, state your name for the record and if you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we will get it sorted. And as always, I want to thank everybody in advance for participating in a civil and respectful way. With that, that takes us to item two, adjustments to the agenda. Manager?
None from me, Mayor.
City Council? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to item three, visitors and communications. This is an opportunity to speak to an item that is not on the agenda tonight. If you want to speak to an item that is on the agenda, you can just raise your hand as we take up that item of business. Are there items for visitors and communications?
I'm Stephen Ruscelli, been discussing our petition for some time and this is the time and the place, I guess, maybe to finally share some of the thoughts. I had a chance to look over the grand list and, you know, the term storage building is very rarely used. The best example I could find of that is For Vine Street. And I have pictures of that here and you can kind of compare. That's actually what Two Orchard Street used to look like before the chaos erupted. I know that Nicholas, you were there on Halloween, right? Where, where two other people examining the site. I actually picked you up on my security camera. Okay. And evidently after you left and you walked around some debris, you probably spoke to Seth Tucker about maybe cleaning up the yard a little bit. Well, he did, but he didn't use a broom. He brought this thing called Windstorm, blew a pile of dust all over the neighborhood. And I've got pictures of that here, which I'd like to share with you. Also, one of the things that you need to consider is the fact that after our petition was filed, Mr. Lozon did take out a permit to shore up the building, but never posted it. So it was never legal. Whatever work he did was never legal. There was never any public input because there was no public posting. Shortly afterwards, the tractor trailer truck deliveries came and went and I have some pictures of some of the incidents here where they're stacking crates in the road. They actually collapsed the manhole cover that was at the intersection of Pond and Orchard Street, which backed up sewage into my house. Eventually it was fixed, but Bill Ayer and as he keeps setting out his pumping truck time after time after time, because I would notice the sewage coming up in my basement. Finally, it was fixed and I think the continuum of any heavy traffic on that street is going to be problematic. I've already seen that the other manhole cover that's just above the property, it's all cracked around that now. And the corners of the street from the tractor trailer trucks turning and trying to make the corners are too narrow crumbling the road. They're driving on my neighbor's lawn at Eight Cherry Street. And I have a picture, Mr. Lozon, of what your warehouse building looked like. There was never anything in the yard prior to your bringing in and changing a unit, a usage from a contractor who provides a service to a retail merchant that stacks crates and crates and crates of merchandise that are way too, way too voluminous for that location. It's point one five of an acre. They filled up every space of that and once it gets filled up, they start working in the street. They start building things, tearing crates apart. We wind up with nails and that's, that was the reason for our petition now. What surprises me is it's taken three years to address this. You know, our complaints have fallen on deaf ears. This is a serious issue where every neighbor in our neighborhood has spoken inside that petition. It's unanimous. I have other pictures of you here, of some of the events. It's too bad. I have videos which are even better that show the sound and how loud this four-wheeling thing that he uses to move stuff around is, which I will, I'll leave off with you and you can copy everybody else. I have pictures of the tractor trailer trucks. Now, my suggestion to you, Mr. Lozon, I know you want to help, Mr. Tucker. I support Berry businesses myself, but not at the expense of the neighborhood. I've listened to you speak.
Sir, when you're in a city council meeting, you don't address a counselor. You address the council.
Okay.
Now, if you want to have a meeting with me and you, I've got a file too, sir. So I know the chronology, your three-year-old petition, how the city responded to it, how they told me we had to conduct business and that's what we've done. So, you know, this is a personal thing. And if you want to bring it up with me personally, I've never spoken to you. You've never picked up the phone and called me. And by the way, give Mr. Heath a message. I do not respond to extortion. And he is not going to buy this building.
I'm gonna, Mr. Ruscelli and Mr. Lozon, it's been about two minutes. And I, I did ask for this to be on the agenda tonight and I, staff explained so that we could be briefed as a council on the zoning file and the history here. And I did that because what I saw happening in the neighborhood would really concern me if it were happening in my neighborhood. A lot of non, are vehicles that don't look roadworthy going up and down the street, flipping off houses as the drivers go by, a lot of use of the public right away. Crates all over the place, a major, what appears to be a major shift in use. So I understand that the manager is working with the planning director and is going to bring back a briefing to council on this matter.
There's a minor involved in this, so I won't bring that up at this meeting, but you'll see in this file.
Yeah.
There's a specific mention to an incident that happened where I was threatened by him to be run over.
Okay. So, um, so this, as I understand, as soon as staff is ready, we're going to have this as an agenda item. But if there are materials that you want us to receive, you have our email addresses. They're on the, on the website. And, and certainly I think when there's a neighborhood disturbance, I think we all take it seriously, so.
Erica Reel has her hand raised online.
Thank you, Mr. Ruscelli. Counselor, or Counselor Reel, that's a flashback. Erica.
Hi, good evening. I'm coming to you as chair of the homeless task force regards to a letter that was sent to council by the vice chair, Stephen Finner. Just calling your attention to the letter and asking for someone to be warned on the agenda in regards to ongoing issues of porta potties within the city. The, the, the task force is again requesting to have porta potties set up within the city, not only for the ongoing use for the homeless, but also for the public. The task force has had many complaints of, of the homeless and the public using the streets as, as public facilities. And we are asking that we reinstall porta potties within the city. You know, it's, it's just for sanitation and for, for just, you know, people need to have a place to go to the bathroom within the city. We know that the shelters are full. The places are closed after hours and people just need a place to go to the bathroom. It's sanitation and it's just, you know, human dignity. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that comment. With that, if there's no other visitor in communications, we can go on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilor Shawn Bell. So we have tonight on approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. We have approval of the city warrants from the week of December 20th, 2023. We have licenses and permits.
Yep, we've got five, one, two, three, one, two, three, four. Um, forgive me for bringing them on little post-its where at that period of time where, you know, they're coming in to me like 20 minutes ago. And since it's the last meeting of the calendar year, I wanted to bring them forward. They do have all the appropriate department approvals. One is for a vehicle for hire, vehicle and business license for KC Taxi. One is for a driver for a vehicle for hire driver for Scott Weston, who is the owner of KC Taxi. We also have an entertainment license application from Elks at 10 Jefferson Street and vending license application from Rise Up Bakery on Granite Street. All of these are renewals and as I said, they do have the appropriate department approvals and are included in the consent agenda.
The next item is the ratification of the 121223 approval of the lease with Berry Up. And we have an appointment for Tess Taylor to the steering committee of the Berry Up nonprofit board of directors to replace the manager. We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion.
Just one point. Last week, I just want to thank Carol. Last week I had brought up the fact that in the lease, the tenant was not required to have liability or any type of insurance. And so I just want to thank Carol. She looked into that, reached out to me and apparently the city was advised by passive that they didn't feel that liability policy was necessary. So that addressed my concern. Thank you, Carol.
Yep.
Good catch. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries, consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to item five, the city clerk and treasurer report.
Just a couple of quick things. Continuing reminder that water and sewer bills are due by January 2nd, since the 31st of December falls on a weekend. And you can stop into the office next week. The office will be open normal hours next week, Monday through Friday. However, I won't be here. So I will be out of town next week. And yeah, looking forward to it. It's the first time I've taken Christmas week off. So, so yeah, so, so we are closed Monday for Christmas, but then open Tuesday through Friday for people to come in and do all their normal city office, city clerk office business. So yeah, that, pay your water bills. That's it.
Thanks. Are there any questions for the clerk or treasurer? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to item six, the liquor and cannabis control boards.
Yep, we've got one item. We've got a second class liquor license and tobacco sales approvals of renewals for Q M Store, which is the, the LLC that is Quality Market up at 155 Washington Street. Again, it has all the appropriate department approvals.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the licenses. Is there any further discussion? Right, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it, one abstention noted.
And I did have one other thing I should have brought up under my report. On, we approved errors and omissions back at the meeting on the fifth. And there is actually a form that does require, this is new since the last time we did any errors and omissions, asking counselors to sign on the back here where it says signature of select board or alderman. And there are five spaces, so squeeze your signatures in there on the right-hand side. Thank you.
Carol, and just if, for those of you standing, you're welcome to stand if that's your preference, but there are seats available if you'd like to sit down too. That takes us to item seven, the city managers report.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'm going to ask Chief Cushman, Deputy Chief Alsworth and BCS Director Jeff to join us just to give a recap of last night's weather response. They can provide some additional color. They're part of the team that was helping here with the deployment. So we, by all measures, we dodged a bullet last night. There was a big sigh of relief late in the evening and early this morning as we were able to assess any damage and the impacts of what happened yesterday. Our response was activated early in the morning. We were conducting routine checks of the flood prone areas. Which for reference, it's West Second Street. We have the, the river gauge over by Burnham. And this particular, and the Berlin Street Bridge, this particular event was a focal point. We were checking trash racks throughout the day as well. By all measures, the mitigation system worked. Brook Street was holding a lot of water, which is it's intended to do. The flood racks, the trash racks were holding debris, which is intended to do to keep it away from the bridges. And, and it kept, it kept the pinch points really moving, which was, which was important. And that's really the key for us is that the, the water was able to keep moving through relatively unobstructed. We were a little bit worried about Berlin Street Bridge, but the water was high and fast, but it was, it was moving. Our areas of concern coming out of this, as I've mentioned a couple of times, Berlin Street Bridge. This bridge still has a lot of debris from the July flood. We haven't been able to get it because there's a very specialized equipment to get under there and there's very limited access in New England to that. But even, I would say, and perhaps our, our team here can verify, but I, I think even without the debris, that was really close for, probably too close for comfort. West Second Street again was the first place where the river jumped the banks. And so that wasn't a surprise. Luckily, the impact was, was minimal. And we saw the, the biggest pooling of water, minor flooding on Depot Square and and North Main Street by, by Second Street. So we, we were staffed, I think, at correct levels. We had additional public safety and fire and police and public works crews. Jeff's team was redeployed to help with the, with the auditorium, setting up the shelter. So I think by and large, we felt it was a little bit too close for comfort, I think. But the system that we have worked and I think, you know, we, we feel like we, we, we came out okay. There was no significant damage reported this morning. I know there were residents who experienced flood in their basements. There were some businesses that experienced that as well. Again, not to minimize anybody's water in their basement, because for whoever has it, it's, it's difficult. But it wasn't to the extent that we saw in July, obviously. Even the people that, that saw it on Main Street. And for us, I think there was some minimal damage of some pavement on Berlin Street that had gone up for the water main repair. But that's something that our, our crews can patch. So overall, like I said, big sigh of relief was the feeling last night and, and this morning. And to the team here, so we, this, this was part of the team. We had public works as well and police, as well as Don, were here in the room. Well, the clerk joined us as well, too.
Yeah.
For moral support. Yeah. But this was the, the core team. And, and yeah, I think it was afraid to say that we're, it's becoming too routine almost. But I don't know if you have anything else to add of that, that I may have left out?
Just, just a, a big shout out to Public Works. As soon as the water started to recede, they, they were out to get the silk cleaned up before it froze in place. So, and, and working hand in hand with them to help secure Main Street so that vehicles weren't driving through and creating a wake and, and causing damage to the, to the downtown buildings.
I think early notifications worked very well, working with the merchants, especially down West Second Street. Tracy was able to get some, a quick email blast out to those folks. I think that's just how we have now. Mechanics is down pretty well. It's almost old hat. I don't want to say that well. So I think as we go, we're looking for feedback in how we can improve it. But I think we're doing pretty well. You know, the auditorium went pretty well. We opened it up. We had 18 people that stayed overnight. Some were from a displaced shelter or the other, were from other parts of Berlin. So those folks were addressed right off. Economic Services pitched in and helped off and the state was a true partner on that, so.
I think like what Joe said, our, our connection with these gentlemen and Vermont Emergency Management was a big plus. In the past, we've had delays in getting Red Cross people to the auditorium to open it, to set it up. That didn't happen this time. It was timely. My crew pulled the trailer over. We got everything ready for them. They got on site. They took care of everything. You know, and I think our meetings in the morning were very productive. Nicholas kept preaching, you know, last time, last time we waited too long. We waited just a little too long. And I think, I think this time we were right on top of it.
Definitely my impression was what an excellent response by the city and Councilor Shawn Bell.
I, I went through town about four o'clock in the afternoon. I was freaking out and then I came back down at 7:30 walking. I was awed at how well everybody pulled everything off. It was just pretty much heartbreaking. So thank you to all of you and to all the crews. It was great.
And Nicholas, great, great job with communication. The communication was early, you know, it was key, setting up the auditorium. Let people, letting people know what to expect, being very specific. That was really helpful because there were certain areas of the city that were more affected than others and certain areas that were not affected at all. But I think identifying those areas and letting those residents know very early that the auditorium is open, you may want to consider, we're not ordering you to evacuate, but we're suggesting if you're going to have difficulty, you know, start early. I, I thought the communication was superb. I mean, the whole thing sucks, let's face it. I'm, I am just over this and discouraged by it and tired of it. And yeah, but, but great response and great communication. So thank you. Thank you all of you.
We can't say enough that this was a great job.
I hope Brian's not here because he's sleeping somewhere.
And I got to visit with Randy Tucker for a while, so that was cool. Yeah, I haven't seen Randy in a while.
I have one actual question. Where are we in the, the equipment for Berlin Street Bridge? It's limited in New England. What is that?
Yeah, I mean, Brian has mentioned, I think there's two, two such pieces of equipment in all of New England. So it's, it's, that's the kind of availability issues we have. I mean, it's, it's been, it's been on our, it's been on our list since the very beginning. It's just a matter of, of getting them here. And might be time for, you know, maybe we all go in on it with the LCT or something because we might need one of these machines for everyone. Yeah, so.
Maybe the agency of transportation.
Yes, yes.
Or natural resources.
Yes. But yeah, that's, that was, I think we were, that was the place that I think gave us all a lot of heartburn because we could see that the water was really, the clearance was quite low. And again, and I don't think it was just the debris, the, the clearance was low anyway. So.
Speaking of that, I caught where the Central Mountain Regional Planning Commission is working on updating the regional plan, which has a transportation chapter and generally identifies regionally significant projects. And from that plan, it flows into the state transportation improvement plan. And I was wondering if, might be just worth talking with them to see if the Berlin Street elevation, obviously it's probably a 10-year project, but, but get in the queue. So, because it seems like this is just happening more and more. I was up at the odd last night and saw one of the same volunteers who was here for the winter storm right before holidays last year. And it's great that they were there and, and Adam was there helping out. So, and just thinking about the frequency of this is definitely, it's definitely concerning and, and it's great to see the city so prepared. I even found the detail of having the street sweeper running at like 8:00 PM last night downtown, hosing off sidewalks. Fantastic. Anything else that anybody wants to?
I was just going to make one more plug for residents to sign up for VT alerts. It's, it's a great resource in addition to social media and the city's website. So you can get it on your phone, you can get a phone call on the landline or via email. So it's worthwhile.
There were times yesterday when every cell phone in City Hall pinged at the same time and we'd all look at them and, you know.
Working.
Yeah.
Just, just to note that RK Miles relayed to me this morning that they lost no product out of this. They were able to move enough and have enough advanced notice. So just, it worked.
Thank you.
And one last question about just heat. Do you know if any heating systems were affected in, in cellars or?
Not yet, not yesterday that I'm aware of.
No, not that I've, I've gotten one of either.
Sorry, Mayor, what was the question?
Heating systems, yeah. So I, I just thought of it because I had a friend in Waterbury who's duplex was flooded in July. They put in new furnaces or boilers in the cellar. Totally wiped out again this year. And so I'm wondering if people in Berry are in a similar situation.
No, and, and I will say that talking with several residents, they all referenced that their utilities had been moved up in the flood prone areas. So that actually was a sigh of relief for them when I was, when I was speaking with them.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate you.
Couple more updates and Tess may join us for this as well. And I know Pat is on the Zoom, but North End Public Engagement. So we, I think I mentioned last week, we shifted the meetings to after the new year. We were coming up too close, pushing up too close to the holidays. And so we knew we were going to be losing some interest. And, and so we are, we met with Pat, Tess, Councilor Stockwell and I met with Pat today. And I think we have a really, a plan that we're, we're comfortable with. And Tess, I don't know if you want to share some of the initial, the, the planning that we're, we're thinking of.
Sure, thank you. So our date is Wednesday, January 17th at the Labor Hall from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM for public input, comment and some presentation. And so we've worked out some things that could be interactive for folks coming to talk about the plan of the North End Gateway. So we'll have some interactive pieces there with drawings and posters and markers and people able to go around and, and with clipboards and just talk to people, you know, that don't feel comfortable writing on things or speaking out loud. And, and then we have a little, a roster of folks to speak, we'll have, we'll start with our mayor, having a, saying a few words. And then we'll lay out what the, what the, the evening will look like. And some of our speakers we're thinking about is to have Rebecca Ellis, who was very instrumental in Waterbury's work after Irene. And so she can talk about her experience with that. And we'd like to hear from Berry Up. We'd like to hear from, also, we're going to have somebody talk about the river. You know, talk about the river flow and some questions that people have been having about what do we do in this case moving forward. And I was thinking that Scott McLaughlin or somebody from a newly formed history group would come and talk a little bit about the North End history and talk about opportunities for people to have input to that project. And then a good 45 minutes of an open mic situation, you know, sort of a couple of open mics, so people could come and talk. And then closing remarks and, and further information. Pat suggested, and it's a great suggestion, that Paul Costello, formerly from Vermont Carlsland Rural Development, who is a really good facilitator, would be the facilitator for this so that everybody who's a, who lives in Berry can participate, even us. So that's what that evening would look like. And then we're talking about the following week on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday to have ward meetings. So that's where you all come in. So that's where you all come in. On Monday, we would have a Ward Three meeting and Ward Three councilors would be encouraged to come. And on Tuesday, Ward Two at the Brook Street School. And then on, I'm sorry, not Tuesday because that's council. Wednesday, Ward Two and at the Brook Street School. And then on Thursday, Ward One at Spalding High School, if people from Ward One would like to have. Those would be open to anybody, but we want to show preference to having people from those wards come and talk, especially having you councilors there to, to talk with them. And so some of those people will have gone to the meeting at the Labor Hall the week before and some will not. So we just want to make sure that we're capturing a public input. Nicholas, I think you talked about maybe the night before. Do you want to?
I'm sorry, Tess, I've.
Oh, that's okay. For the, for the A and R.
Oh, the A and R. Thank you. I, yeah, so we were, we've been talking to, Pat's been pulling together some A and R experts to talk about river science. And we thought it would be, they're, they're more appropriate to have that presentation really take place here at the council meeting. It'll be.
On that Tuesday.
On the Tuesday before the, yeah, yeah. So we would have them here. We would have them be present on the seventeenth if they're able to and, but have the, the bigger presentation happen in this setting from them.
Yeah, and I think that, that makes so much sense because it gives them, you know, the breadth to, to do a really comprehensive presentation. And, and you all are the people that really do need to hear it as we do as well. People can come or they can hear it online or you'll have it recorded. So it's, I think that's a, that's a really great way to use our time. And so there's that.
Tess, before we move on, I just want to make sure that we have these dates right. So it's Wednesday, January seventeenth from six thirty, or starting around six thirty at the.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the Labor Hall. And that's the North End discussion or the North End Gateway Project and River Resilience.
Yeah, I've been calling it North End Gateway Visioning, but yeah, listening session.
And then the week following that, that'd be the twenty-second, the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-second, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. And we were thinking of starting those at five to six thirty.
Yeah, five to six thirty. And again, the Ward Three location is going to be?
We're hoping, we just have to confirm the Mutuo.
Yeah. And then Brook Street School and then Spalding High School for Ward One. Got it.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. Pat, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. Thank you so much, Tess. As the city manager reported, we are hoping that the Rivers Engineers people can come and speak with the council. I've written to them today to talk about a change of date from the sixteenth, excuse me, from the seventeenth to the sixteenth. They're all a little busy today, I think, but I hope to hear back from them and have them do a presentation about the science and why things like dredging is not a good idea and what they can help us with in determining best places for flood storage, new floodplain, et cetera. So, and, and as Tess had said, that's important for you as the council members. You're the decision makers on this. So I think that's critical and having it recorded and putting it up on the city website, we can refer others to that who would like to get the same kind of information. Because I think that education about the science of rivers is really important. And folks need to understand why certain solutions are better than other solutions. And we're very excited for the community meeting. We've already gotten people who Will England, the Zecanellis are going to be donating some Parker House rolls. And we're very excited about that. And they're very interested in attending as well. And then we're working on some other munchies because it is the six to seven thirty hour. It's not dinner, but it's at least something to tide folks over. And obviously, the, excuse me, the main focus is really to get people's feedback, but what do they want to see built in the North End as we look to create resiliency in housing? And, and what do they want to see? As, as we all know, the governor has put out a concept, but it is only that, a concept, nothing final, nothing, a final plan. So it's time to start having the residents of Berry determine what they want to see in the final plan.
Thanks for mentioning the food, the most important thing. I can't. And then also on our team was Counselor Stockwell.
Yes, but I see there are other hands up and maybe they should go first.
In the order that I saw them, Erica Rail, Amy Gelford, Joel and Lovini. Erica?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this is fully accessible considering not only, you know, accessible for people with mobility issues, but also ASL interpreters, you know, those types of things.
The Labor Hall I know is fully accessible. The, I believe the Mutuo is, I think, I'll, I'll double check, but yes, and Brook Street School has to be, Spalding High School is, so the buildings are, as far as ASL, I can look into that. Thanks for mentioning it.
Well, I'm not only considering like look into that, but also if they've been, you know, prepared because I know getting ASL interpreters are hard to get in the evening hours. And if you want full Berry feedback, you need to also incorporate that Berry has the second largest death population in the state. Thank you.
Okay.
This is something where the advertisements could ask if anyone's looking for an accommodation to reach out to you and.
That's great.
Amy Gelford?
Thanks. I'm still working on my, my comments to try to make them concise to go to that, that email address. But one thing I'm going to comment on is I'd love to see the plan have something for civic space in the North End because part of trying to figure out where to meet is we don't have a civic meeting place in the North End. I don't consider the Labor Hall to be in the North End. To me, that's downtown. I'm curious about parking and public transit there. It's a pretty small parking lot. Is that going to be enough of an accommodation? I think Councilor Lozan had raised that, that better to have, you know, a few hundred meters away, but have more parking maybe than the issues with the Labor Hall. So I'm just curious about that and if there's a public transit arrangement.
Thank you.
Or maybe that's not the right word, but transportation assistance.
I see Tess taking notes. Joel and Lovini?
Good evening. Joel Lovini, Pleasant Street in the North End. I'm, I'm just wondering how is it that people in the North End are going to know about the meeting? By the way, I think there's plenty of parking across the street from the Labor Hall at Deserols. How, how are folks going to know? Because there are some people who are, some of my neighbors are not hooked into any kind of media. They don't read the newspaper, you know. So what kind of effort can be made to maybe flyers door to door, something that's really physical so that they don't forget about it and that it's right in their face?
Excellent point, and I'm going to defer to Nicholas in a second, but the expectation is that we will be doing some canvassing door to door, get some posters out around town, start to publicize this for, for folks who may not be watching the web or getting email or even reading the newspaper. So Nicholas, you had a, a machine we kind of turned on for the VCRD, excuse me, City Manager, Starelli Castro. You had a process that got turned on for the VCRD meeting. And I know a lot of those folks have expressed interest in assisting again with these meetings.
Yes, we do have an incredible machine here for canvassing, generally led by my friend Adam here. And, and I have to tell you that I did do some canvassing for him for that meeting and a group of us. And he's a great trainer for canvassing. So anybody who would like to volunteer is really welcome to do that. And you can just get ahold of me or get ahold of Adam through Berry Up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, Adam, you were saying there might be, which day? January sixth or seventh.
Yeah.
For weekend canvassing. So anybody thinking about volunteering, January sixth or seventh, that weekend. Pat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We also talked about possibly getting some notification in any city mailing that might be going out between now and the seventeenth as another means, whether it's any kind of tax bill or anything, or any notification as another possible means of helping to get notification out.
We don't have any mailings going out. However, there is a great program that's, every box, it's run through the post office where they will put a postcard in every mailbox. And you can specify an area. You can, you know, work with them. And I'm, I'm happy to work with you on setting that up. That's pretty easy and relatively low cost, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Considering then, Councilor Stockwell?
I definitely agree on the, the written expression to somebody that people have gotten a lot of phone calls and Facebooks and emails and stuff, but really stuck was the substantial damage letters that went out to people. They got the letter and said, look, we got to make sure we get something done. And I know that the residents that I've talked to on Second Street and Third Street are like, yeah, you know, I've got this piece of paper in my hand. I see it on the coffee table. I know that this is something I got to do. So I really applaud you guys for trying to get that word out in a paper form.
So the hope is that when we have this meeting on the seventeenth, that we have information from the door to door that we can put up on the walls. Like here's what people are seeing. Here's what some of the data looks like. So people aren't going into this without knowing that. And my hope is that therefore, we set a date for ourselves for coming up with a plan that we're happy with by, say, mid-February. So that we'll have blanks of, we'll have blank maps that will say, you know, draw what you would like. We'll have maps of the, of the plan proposed. We'll have other maps there. So I think through this process, we can have enough information so we can create a reasonable plan, understanding that the plan will change and change again, but we could have something to, to submit.
Councilor Lozan?
Thank you. Still have the same concern, Tess. The capacity of the Labor Hall is what?
Three hundred.
Three hundred? I just see a lot more than three hundred people. I mean, we're a city of eight thousand. And I think everyone, you don't have to live in the North End to have a stake in the North End or to feel a certain way, you know, fondly about the North End. So I just, I'm really concerned about more than three hundred people wanting to participate in person and the city having to turn people away. So last time we talked, I said, well, if we did it at the auditorium, if we did it at, you know, those are the largest venues in the city. So at least we could, if folks got turned away in spite of the fact that we held it, for example, at the Opera House, at least we could say to people, we put our best foot forward. We, we use the largest venue in the city to accommodate the largest number of people. The other concern I have about the Labor Hall is I get, you know, in terms of Labor Hall parking, you know, it's your neighborhood. It's, you know, it's rather limited. Some of the neighbors are usually pretty generous about allowing in off hours, allowing others to use their parking lots, but we have to make sure we accommodate that. And then lastly, I just have concerns about, you know, are we going to run buses, dedicated buses or transportation around the city at certain points, not just in the North End, but also in other areas? So folks who don't have a vehicle, you know, if it's, you know, January seventeenth, it didn't seem it yesterday, but it can be ten degrees below zero on January seventeenth. So folks who, you know, may not otherwise be able to be comfortable walking to that venue could. So I just hope we've considered, I mean, I'm excited.
Yeah.
I hope we have, I'm hopeful that we have some sort of dedicated webpage. I mean, this is the biggest opportunity for the city of Berry that I've seen in my lifetime. And, you know, so I'm hopeful that we have maybe a webpage or something where we can share information in advance of the meeting. For example, topography maps, there's a wealth of information out there. There are certain areas that in the conceptual plan were identified as potential development areas that actually are not. They're either wetlands or it's land that has deed restrictions attached to it. So is there any way that we could perhaps in advance of the seventeenth, and I know you're, you're all really busy, but is there any way we could come up with some sort of repository where we could place information so that people could perhaps educate themselves prior to the meeting, including the suggestions that you get from canvassing? So that someone isn't saying something redundant?
Yeah, it's a great, it's, it's, it's a great idea.
And how do I help, lastly? Because I'm, I'm so excited. So if you do need Adam, I'm, I'm a slow learner, but I'm, I'm happy to try.
Councilor Lozan's an introvert, but I think we can figure it out.
Yeah, usually people see me and turn around and walk the other way. So, you know.
Yeah, no, the website is definitely, you know, having its own page is a great idea because we do have the, the talent here and we have oodles and oodles of information to put on it and it's readily available. So consolidate it so that it's in the right place. Transportation, that's kind of out of my bailiwick.
Do we have buses?
I mean, we can talk to the school district. When we ask them to backpack home, all the leaflets, we'll ask them to use their buses.
Well, good. We're hosting a community meeting. They should be a part of it so they can pass that along to the school board councilor.
And if failing that, I know that Rainbow Bridge has provided some rides and has some rides capability. We use some rides through Capstone, I believe, for the VCRD event as well. And we'll, we'll, we'll see what kind of uptake there was on that or intake there was on those to plan out what the need might be, but we'll.
Or even if you're doing the webpage, you know, the opportunity to carpool.
Yeah.
So that if someone's, you know, going down with two people in a vehicle that fits four, there might be someone in their neighborhood that could use a ride.
Thank you. After me, Byrne.
After, yeah.
So what's reasonable to expect in a crowd? I don't think I've ever seen a large crowd. I've seen, you know, like maybe a hundred or so people. And that seems like for events that were really, people were really interested in.
Yeah, I was curious in the all-in for Berry numbers because that was like, that was earlier.
Well, quick, quick unscientific poll. How many in this room plan on attending?
No, no, these are people who are involved.
I said, unscientific. Knowledge is power.
So, yeah, so what were the numbers for the all-in for, or all-in for Berry or Berry Up, round two? Does anybody know? It seemed like to me it was under a hundred, so. And maybe fifty for the first one.
Definitely under two.
Okay, a hundred and twenty, okay.
I mean, I think the thing about the canvassing is it is great to get numbers and it really would be powerful to get numbers. But what I think the canvassing that happened for the Berry Up VCRD second meeting showed that the numbers were probably about the same, but it was new people. And it was people that had never shown up to things like this before. And, and that was, that was powerful in itself. And, you know, people will have opportunity because of the website and others to, to have their input, even if they don't get to show up because of weather or because of transportation or because they forgot, you know. There's, there's always so many reasons why people intend to come to something and they don't make it, you know?
There's that.
Oh, there's that.
Could we create an event on social media and ask people if they're interested? You know, you see events on Facebook where you say, we're having this event.
Yeah.
This person is interested. This person is definitely going. If the numbers go off the charts right away, that might.
That's easy. Then we can, then we can shift. Yeah.
Thank you.
In terms of, I do like the suggestion of the, you know, if the, if the backup is between the odd or the Opera House, I feel like the odds are nicer to have people on this, not in such a formal theater-like setting. It seems like it's less, has a bit more, it's nice if people are on the same level unlike this dais right now. All right, Byrne, and then Ellen Kay, and then I saw Pam, if you still want to speak. Okay, all right. Byrne Rose?
Hi, thanks. Thank you to everyone tonight. And it was really nice to see Chief Cushman this afternoon when I went to buy eggs from him at the farm. And he, he said how great the cleanup because I, I told him I'd been downtown and it looked so good. And that's when he told me all that the workers had done. But I do want to just say when you were talking about transportation, Tess, if you talk with Rainbow Bridge or whoever, Berry Up, whoever else it was that you were, you mentioned, please make it really clear that you're looking for volunteer drivers. Because oftentimes I'll put a little note saying that if somebody needs a ride, I'll, Because oftentimes I'll put a little note saying that if somebody needs a ride, I'll, I'll bring them. I have a little car, but I can make more than one trip and I can drive at night now and I've got new glasses. So I'm good to go.
All right.
And there's no charge because it's just a friendship neighborhood thing. But I think there are a lot of us and I think that's more successful. And it also helps us to engage with our neighbors when we say, hey, I'm going to this meeting, would you like a ride? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen Kay?
Yes, this sounds great. I come from the world of, of union activism and organizing. And then so I'm, we have a lot of ways to get people to sort of commit to coming to things. So like Counselor Lozern was saying, you know, if you, if you can get people to hit a register button if they're online or if you're going door to door, and you may have said this, so I apologize if I didn't hear it, but if you're going door to door and you're not just saying, hey, there's this event, but like let us, like, you know, here, put your name here. We'll keep you in the loop about it as it gets closer, something like that. And, you know, out and out, ask people if they think they, they will try to make an effort to come and do some follow-up because people, when they, when they make a commitment, they don't forget about it as easily. So, yeah, this is great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Dearing?
A couple of things. One thing, we could do an Eventbrite, it's an online ticket, anything that's free. That might be a way to help out, get some registration numbers. Something about the GMT program that they have for volunteer for ride share. Maybe we could reach out to our partners with GMT, maybe they'd wanna help us out with some volunteer ride share. And just one statement was that I was dealing with some residents down in the North End and they were concerned about being forced to sell their house. I just wanna make it clear that we're not forcing people to sell their house. And if they want to, they can with the buyout, but we're not forcing anyone to sell their house. That was a concern some people had, that they were going to be forced to sell their house, that the governor was gonna come and take their house. And I just wanted to make it clear that we're not coming to take people's houses. No one's gonna be taking anyone's house. That's all I've got.
Counselor Wazak.
Not to jump ahead too far, but we have the meetings, we have the second week of ward meetings. We compile, we synthesize everything we hear. What happens next? Does city staff huddle with Patricia and bring in a new map? Is the governor coming back with a new map after he hears all the input? Like what's the long-term?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we, we take the input and we, I think it's a collective process. I don't think it's just city staff. I think it's, you know, we, we can provide the support for sort of a collective vision that is responsive to the feedback, informed by the, the information that staff can provide and consistent with the, the direction that the council wishes to go.
Okay, so, and like, I'm not trying to like be annoying here, but specific next steps for how we're going to use that data? And what is the next step that we're using this, that we're using this data to inform?
So to rephrase it, what's the objective of this?
I, I think the objective is to get to a, a second round drawing that is responsive to the feedback that we get at these meetings, consistent with the information that staff provides and then reflective of the council's will. I, I think the, the product is similar, it's just informed by different information.
So is the like, and so that's my question, are we going to have like a city council meeting where we have basically another public meeting, only it's in the formality of a council? And we all group, think a map or how, that's more, you know, and we don't have to figure out that stuff now, but those are the kind of specifics that I wanna know.
Yeah, I'd imagine it happened in the, in a council setting. And then, you know, we've, we'll talk to Pat, I know Black River, Black River's on retainer and we'll see what sort of resources are at the state to sort of do that next round. But I, I think that's the idea, to come up with, you know, something that's a, a similar product, but that is informed by different inputs.
And I, and I think that, you know, Counselor Stockwell made the point that we probably should give ourselves, the council, give yourselves a deadline in, in February so that this doesn't linger and, and we make sure we're not missing any opportunities. And we're also, I think that it's a good suggestion because when, I don't know about you, but when I have a deadline, it really makes me focus in and, and get it done. And it's just not open-ended anymore.
Thank you. If I may, I think that's an excellent point, Tess, a deadline's a great idea. And it's a great question, Counselor, that you've asked about the next steps. And we need to take this input from the community. This needs to be a project the community can endorse. And specifically, this council can endorse and support because there's likely to be multiple applications for funding that this council will have to approve. But more important, it, we need to take this input and also layer river science on top of it and look at where can we recreate flood plain and flood storage areas? Also layer engineering and design on top of that. So there's, there's a lot of work to do, but to be able to use the concepts and the desires of the community as the starting point and then look at some of those technical aspects and then get to the point of getting a cost estimate. So we know what the bogey is, if you will, for financing. So there's a fair amount of work ahead of us, but it's important to start with what does the city of Berry, its people and its legislators, meaning you as, as the governance body, wanna see happen?
Great, thank you. That was helpful.
This feels like a really exciting opportunity to make Berry a case study in long-term river resilience. And I love the ward meeting idea because I think some people like on Mill Street or River Street or Vine or in Berlin, we're feeling a little bit left behind by the initial geography of the North End gateway. And it's great to be thinking that, that we're thinking about this from a river science perspective. Where are the opportunities on River Street or Mill Street or especially those river adjacent parcels? It seems like all the other flood resilience projects in the state, whether it's Northfield or Brattle, Brattleboro, where there've been buyouts, they've, they've included those type of, types of river adjacent properties. But, but we have to be creative and, 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 and like Counselor Dearing said, nobody's out to exercise eminent domain and take anybody's home away from them, particularly in a market where there are very few options for other people for, you know, if eminent domain were to be used for people to go. So really looking forward to the process and a new concept that grounded in river science and, and the desires of the community. All right, if there are no other.
We're still.
We should have been agendaed it up.
And I'll just, I'll just finish up, Mayor. At the end of every year, just on the, on a positive note, we recognize employees for significant milestones that they reach in city service. And so this year, like, like last year, we have several employees reaching those milestones and I'd just like to recognize them. We have Everett Hoyt from the Water, Water Sewer Foreman, 10 years with the city. Lance Abear from the Streets Department, 10 years with the city. Rick Taft from Human Resources, 10 years with the city. Josh Kosikowski, Water Treatment Plant, 15 years. We have two officers, Jonathan Hool and Randall Tucker, 15 years each with the Police Department. Joe Kelly, been with the Water Department for 25 years. And Clint Smith, many of you know, Water Sewer Billing, 35 years of service with the city. And then Clerk Doss, 15 years of service as well. So we're really lucky to have all these people with us and like to recognize their service at the end of every year.
She would have called it at 14, I bet.
I don't know, she might have another five in her.
Definitely.
Definitely not.
All we're asking is for two.
Is that a motion?
That's out of order. All right, so that's it for.
Yeah, that's it for me.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, hearing is seeing none. That takes us to our first item of new business. So we have the warning of the first and second public hearings on the proposed charter changes included, included in the packet for January 23rd, 2024 and February 6th, 2024.
Don't move.
The second and very quick point of order on the memo. Second page of the memo, schedule for charter revisions is laid out in statute. Here is the timeline. First box, December 19th. It says, warn first and second public hearings for January 25th, and that should be the 23rd.
Good job, Teddy.
Always read the packet.
There's a motion in the second and a correction on the, the date. I, I did note that one of the sections being amended includes the zoning board of adjustment. And I was wondering if it'd be considered a friendly amendment since we haven't had a zoning board of adjustment in many years to change that to the Development Review Board. Just to line it up with, which I think it's this one right here. The city council shall annually appoint an attorney, library liaison, planning board and zoning board of adjustment, which is not the model of governance we're using. It's a Development Review Board.
I just, the language that's in here is language that's just been thrown at me over the last several months. It hasn't been vetted in any way, shape or form by counselors who are the ones who kind of bring, should be bringing this stuff forward. Hasn't been vetted by any attorneys, hasn't anything. I brought this to you to show you what the raw material is at the moment. So, and what the timeline is.
And those changes could be made.
Anything, anything could be changed, anything, there, there's. The, the language doesn't need to be finalized until the meeting of January 23rd. As it says in the timeline, that's the last opportunity to, to make changes, so.
And will the attorney review them before?
I, I'm sorry to express my frustration, but I feel like I'm flying blind on this because it's not, it shouldn't be fronted by the clerk. It shouldn't be, this bus shouldn't be driven by the clerk. I'm happy to provide the administrative support. I'm happy to support it when it goes to the legislature and all the steps in between. But it, as far as crafting the language, that's above my pay grade, so.
So in terms of probably a normal practice, it would be to have an attorney look at our.
Yeah, we can have the.
Important document.
I would, so.
Yep, the hearings.
I mean.
Counselor Booton?
Yeah, I, I know that we're just doing the warning, but I'm certainly not interested in advancing some of these articles in here. Obviously for the children voting. And I do have a problem with, with the, basically getting rid of half of our civic center committee, half of our cemetery committee, you know, Bob Nelson, the, the only individual that was on our diversity and equity committee or the Jedi, the justice, yeah, Jedi B C committee that was a person of color for like a year. I, I just, it wasn't a year. Anyway, I'm just not okay with that. I think that the only thing that I would be feeling really comfortable about is the school district stuff. Cause that doesn't belong in our charter. And it would just be a, a simple, you know, cleaning up the charter ballot item. And we could put it up on there. And I'm sure that if it's just cleaning up the charter for getting rid of the school district stuff, I think that we would be able to pass it as a, a large, you know, one-line comment.
So. So the, the objective of this motion is to warn two hearings for the language presented. We'll get, make sure that they're legally sound. I take it that members proposing their language can give a little bit of background as to what, what the basis is. Anything affecting the school district, I hope is gonna be coordinated with the superintendent, we'll get a heads up.
Doesn't have to, does it?
I've been fighting this one for, since.
Yeah.
The, for four plus years. I actually spoke with the League of Cities and Towns earlier this week, which would have been yesterday, about they, they're putting together a, a group of kind of administrative changes that they're hoping the, the legislature will, will approve. Sort of some cleanup language that, and I suggested this because it's not unique to Berry. It's any community that has a charter and has adopted a unified union school district articles of agreement. They've got language in their charter that's in conflict with the articles. And there's a lot of cleanup that needs to be done. And if we were to put it in front of the voters and the voters didn't approve it, it would just continue that conflict in the two documents. And that's why it would be nice to just have it cleaned up administratively by the legislature. But I'm not sure that, I've been pushing for that for four years, not sure whether it'll actually happen, but.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree with you on that. It should be done by the legislature since they're the ones that forced it. That being said, I'll be voting no on this just because I'm not interested in advancing those two ideas. I'll just be quite frank with you, I'm not okay with children voting.
I hope you at least listen. I mean, you know, I wanna make it clear to people because, well, thankfully, during the flood, people were focused on that and not on this. And then immediately this morning, as the floodwaters receded and we dodged the bullet, people, you gotta go to the city council meeting because they're voting on this. No, we're not. As a courtesy, I mean, regardless of what my opinion may be, I'll always support the right of a counselor to bring something before the council. And you may not change my mind, you may change my mind, but I'll always listen. So the way I see it, Counselor, that's all this is about. I do have a soft opinion on all of these issues, but I'm willing to listen to folks on the 23rd and on the 6th who might have a different opinion or who might be able to educate me. So I'm okay with it. It'll be a, it'll be an interesting process.
All right, so we have a motion in the second. If there's no further discussion. Steve McKenzie, if you could come to the microphone.
Carol, for your record, my name is Steve McKenzie.
Is that a capital K?
No, absolutely not. Not the reason I came up here, but my congratulations to Nicholas and the staff for the preemptive and rapid response to the flood. Congratulations. But I came to speak to a couple of the charter changes. I would urge striking the latter two. The expanding of the electorate to 16 and 17-year-olds, I'll take them one at a time. I'm not sure what the rationale is behind that, but as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about expanding the electorate, electorate to folks who don't have a financial stake in the game. I think it's as simple as that. I'm not sure what the rationale for that is, but I would urge the council to not move forward with that change. And then with respect to the restricting city committees to city residents, again, not sure what the rationale and motivation for that is, but we have, we have numerous committees where we have had faithful service by members of the town, some of whom don't have a financial stake in the, in the city, others who do, who others who are business owners and taxpayers. I think restricting the pool of committee, potential committee members to only city residents substantially reduces the pool of very qualified and very interested folks who can serve the city, who have served the city well in the past. And I think it's a, I think it's a step backwards, if you will. So, simple as that.
Thank you. Dr. Finner? Well, you're muted and then unmuted, or unmuted and muted, so you're, you're, we can't hear you right now. Oh, and now you're frozen up. Okay, we're gonna loop back to you. Joel Mulveney?
Hi, Joel, I'm from the North End. I, I'm very concerned about the.
Okay, thank you. Basically what the previous speaker said.
You wanna take Steve first?
Yeah, well, Steve, yeah, Steve, we're having some tech issues hearing you. Now you're, you're muted again. Can you try one more time? There you go. Yeah. Yeah.
I sent an email to the council.
Uh, we're gonna, yeah, definitely just shoot us an email if, uh, it looks like there's some tech difficulty tonight. Back to Joel and Mulveney.
So, um, I've, I've been concerned for a long time, ever since I realized that there are many committees of the city that are dominated by other than city residents. Yeah, there have been great volunteers and they do wonderful work, but, but there is something about the kind of connection that city people have to the issues here. And the issues, let's face it, are very different between the two communities. So I'm not sure that every committee had to have every city, every city, I, I'm actually don't know what the wording is because I haven't seen it, but perhaps it could be worded that there could, there's a certain kind of ratio, let's say, of city people to non-city people. Maybe like in a committee of seven, only two could be from a non-city residents. City residents have a huge stake here, not just businesses, not just commerce. And I think we've been kind of ignored for a long time. A lot of resources go into supporting the businesses and the schools for sure. I mean, yes, but I'm concerned that, that city people dominate the city committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Druge and then Sonia Spalding online.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Barbara Druge. I think that the people on the committees, like they were saying should be the city. I think if you're willing to put the time in to volunteer, whether you're in Berry City or Berry Town, Berry Town, Berry City has unified school districts. If we're going to be unified, then it should also count for that. And is there anybody here that thinks a 16 or 17-year-old has enough knowledge at that stage in their life to go out and buy a beer, buy a pack of cigarettes? Everybody says that kids that age don't have the capacity to make up their mind to do that. That's why it's not legal for them to purchase those items. If they're not old enough to make those decisions, they're not old enough to decide what taxpayers and what this community needs. That's just my opinion. And if anybody disagrees, and you think 16, 17-year-olds should be drinking, smoking, or making their own decisions in life at that point? I don't know. At 16, I don't think I was capable of voting, so just my opinion.
Thank you for your comments. Just as a reminder, we're, we're not debating the, we're not debating the chart. This is a, the question before the body is, should this language be warned for two hearings, at which point that we would take public comment on the, on the, the questions, the proposed questions for the ballot? So, Sonia.
Listen very carefully to everyone on the 23rd and the 6th.
Well, the 23rd, because the 6th, we'll have all, yeah, but we'll have already, the, the opportunity to change language will have already passed.
On the 26th. So, so, yeah. So, does anybody wish to speak to the motion about whether or not this should, this should, to, to advance the, these questions to hearing? I still see hands up. Sonia Spalding.
So I guess my question is, or my comment is regarding the language specifically about committees, city committees. And I know I've come before you before and advocated for only city residents to be on those committees. And I've had lots of discussions after making those comments. And so my suggestion about a language change would be, I think Joellen had a great idea. I hadn't thought about a ratio, but I also think that committees that are deciding things specifically about Berry City Planning Commission, the DRB, those should be Berry City residents. And so I would encourage you to think about maybe certain committees should be Berry City residents, and others are more regional in the sense that diversity and equity should be a regional goal. And the Civic Center Committee Recreation may be more regional because they include, you know, peoples from other communities. So I, I think we could probably think about having it be maybe a compromise between the language that you currently have in the packet and the way that it is now.
Thank you.
Call the question, please.
There's a, a motion to end debate. Is there a second? There's a second. This takes a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of ending debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
You guys have it. The motion carries. We have a motion in a second before council to warn the language. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Eric, just wanted to note, the language can be changed prior to, and I think we all understand that.
Yeah, yeah. So between now and that hearing is definitely your opportunity to lobby your elected representatives and reach out to us. With that, that takes us to FY25 budget presentations by Berry Area Development Corp., Aldrich Library, and the Berry Partnership. And did you want them in that order, Nicholas?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Who's going first, BADC?
ADC, yep.
Welcome. Thank you so much for having us. Executive Director of Berry Area Development. With me here is Al Flori, our treasurer, and David Sickle, our secretary. We had submitted our fiscal year '24 overview and fiscal year '25 budget packet to you this evening. What I wanted to do was go through our PowerPoint presentation with you, so you have it on the screen. Folks online can also see this as well? Okay, fantastic.
Tell me when you want me to go to the next one.
Okay, great. So I'm going to scroll through mine, and if you want to go down to the next slide, I'll take a little bit of time and just go through what we're going to be discussing this evening. I'll be going over the benefits of Berry Area Development to our community, our focus in the next fiscal year, starting July 1st of 2024, our accomplishments year-to-date in the current fiscal year we're in, our business recruitment and goals, again, year-to-date, and goals for the coming fiscal year, overview of the work with the Berry Community Relief Fund, discussion on tourism, brief overview of our key performance indicators for the past year-to-date, and our fiscal year strategy initiatives and objectives. And then time for question and answers. So, next slide. Berry's, Berry Area Development's benefits to the community are as follows. To nurture, promote, sustain, and implement economic development in the Berry community, both the city and the town. To coordinate economic development services among various local, state, and federal agencies and organizations that impact economic housing and development in the Berry community. To collaborate with the Berry Partnership and other private and not-for-profit and government sectors to provide joint marketing and business recruitment and retention. To act as a point of contact for information and support regarding economic development in both municipalities. To develop and work with funding sources to assist and sustain housing and business development in our community. Berry Area's marketing of the community is key for our growth in housing, business, and economic development. Next slide. Our focus in fiscal year '25 is on housing and economic strategy, on business development, and on the execution of a strategic plan which is now underway during this current fiscal year. Our accomplishments year-to-date, since I actually made this slide, we received news today from CVEDC, Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation, that the proposed Prospect Heights project has actually been named to the regional priority list as a number one spot for the year ahead. So we are very excited about that.
You go, Ame, you go.
The project ahead of us. We have a really great team of people working on it. Of course, pending all absolutely needed due diligence, the development of Prospect Heights, we believe will be a very clear solution to help make a dent in this housing crisis we're all dealing with, not just for the immediate Berry area, but also for the central Vermont region. Over 50 businesses have been targeted and outreach to during this current fiscal year-to-date, both pre-flood and then post-flood. Bit of a pause there during recovery from the first flood. And that includes successful business deployments, loan facilitations in Berry. Details of all this is provided through our monthly Board of Directors meetings, which is a public meeting that we hold that the public is invited to and, and all of you and our board members, once a month, the second Monday of each month. Is that right?
Yep.
Thank you. I had to think about that for a minute. The establishment and direction with marketing of the Berry Community Relief Fund was a major effort of ours this past fiscal year. This fund was developed to assist businesses and individuals affected by the historic flood in July of this year. Over $500,000 was raised, and over $438,000 has been distributed in grants to date to both businesses and individuals. Next slide. So snapshot of our business recruitment, both pre and post-flood, and then overview of our goals for the next fiscal year. It's just a, a list, listing here of, of businesses and their status. Next chapter, there was a relocation, Arcana, a relocation, Earthly Wonders came in as a new business, Optical Expressions expanded, opened up a second location, Taste Vermont, new business to the area, Fox Market, an expansion, also a second location for them, CB Hair Studio, a new business to the area, and Tally VT, also a new business to Berry City.
Director Green, I saw Council Booten had his.
Would you like questions now, or would you prefer us to wait until the end of the presentation?
Whatever, I'm happy to take questions. That's fine.
So you assisted all those businesses this year?
In some capacity or another, yeah. And our details for, for all of these are provided every month at the board meetings. Some are loan facilitations, some are grants, some are troubleshooting things with permitting. It really varies from business to business. Any other questions?
Sorry, I was just scratching my head.
Oh. Our fiscal year '25 targets include our ongoing recruitment of Vermont-based businesses, and then of course, our ongoing recruitment and targeting of national and international businesses relocating to Berry. Of course, this needs to be done in parallel with the work underway to provide workforce housing. Without housing, it's difficult to actually encourage larger employers to the area with, without places for their employees to live. Next slide. This is a, you can jump onto the next slide, an overview of our work with the Berry Community Relief Fund. So it was Berry Area Development's brainchild to launch the Berry Community Relief Fund, which was established to help raise money for businesses and individual assistance in recovery and rebuilding after the July flood. Berry Area Development directed the marketing campaign and was instrumental in the fund's success. Our goals for the marketing campaign were fundraising, and then of course, the distribution of that aid. Over $500,000, as I mentioned before, was raised, and over $438,000 granted to date to businesses and individuals by the BCRF Board, which is a separate entity from BADC. Next slide. This is an overview of tourism. So as a result of the flood, BADC actually had the opportunity to work directly with tour bus companies, providing guidance and dining to shop, and shopping, providing guidance and dining, dining and shopping to over 2,000 tourists who ended up getting diverted to Berry during key, the key height of foliage season due to the flood. Normally, these buses would have gone to Montpelier, and they were diverted here, which definitely added a boost to the post-flood economy. We marketed to additional tour bus companies during this time, which resulted in more bus tour visits during that peak fall foliage timeframe in August, September, and October. What's come out of that is some, a long-term program planning, actually, to bring tour companies back for fiscal year '25 and beyond, with full-fledged opportunities for these bus companies to provide full tours of Berry City and Berry Town. Next slide. We're going to jump to the next slide. I'm going to give an overview of our key performance indicators. This is year-to-date. Our Instagram and Facebook, this just gives you a snapshot of our followers earlier in the year on both Instagram and Facebook, and how those have grown as of early December of this year for both Instagram and Facebook. And then the next slide are some highlights. So these are some posts that were put up, and what it shows here is the actual reach of people and the number of engagements from each one of these particular posts. It gives you a sense of those kinds of social media posts that we're putting up that engage the community around fundraising when we were involved with the initial stages of launching the Berry Community Relief Fund to new businesses coming to the city. We are actually in the process of developing the first annual Central Vermont Economic Development Summit, which will be Friday, May 3rd. Mark your calendars. From, at the Vermont Grand Museum, we're doing that in conjunction with the Berry Partnership and CVEDC. I think people are getting pretty excited about that. It'll be a full day of, you know, workshops, seminars, speakers geared at workforce housing and municipal engagement. Onto the next slide. This is an overview of our strategy for the year ahead. So next slide. Initiatives, continued initiatives for fiscal year '25 to further Berry's growth through the execution and implementation of our strategic plan, which is now underway during this fiscal year, through targeting national demographics to relocate and grow businesses in Berry in parallel with housing growth, through continuing to build on inventory platforms we have for potential business owners of available commercial spaces. As I mentioned, launching the first annual Central Vermont Economic Development Summit in conjunction with the partnership and CVEDC, continue to grow our social media base and presence, highlighting and supporting current businesses in the Berry area, to continue strengthening our connections with entrepreneurs throughout the state, to continue targeting industry-related publications in Vermont, advertising in key national publications, and participating in industry-related expos. Our objectives, next slide. For fiscal year '25 is to roll out a Berry Area Development rebranding. This is post-strategic plan. Part of our strategic plan is, is the process of rebranding, to foster housing and business expansion in Berry, to continue to recruit and assist businesses in opening in Berry, to highlight progress and transformative developments in the community, to continue to attract external entrepreneurs, to support and showcase new and current Berry businesses, to proactively collaborate with business owners and innovators, innovators, and to showcase all ongoing initiatives. And then the last slide is a snapshot of our proposed budget. We are proposing a level-funded budget to support our work. This is a breakout for the city. We also show the town as well of our proposed budget of $81,335 for fiscal year '25, which was what was budgeted and granted to us for the current fiscal year that we're in, that we are in. And then the breakout also shows our, our year-to-date. This year-to-date figure is as of November 30th. So again, we are asking for the continued support of the city of this level-funded budget to support our critical work in the area. And then my last slide is, any questions that you may have?
I'm just going to stop sharing so we can see if.
Okay.
Council Stokel.
Could you tell me more about the details of the collaboration between BADC and the partnership?
On an ongoing basis? We collaborate on marketing initiatives. We collaborate on information around new businesses opening, supporting, you know, during the flood this past year, we got involved actually with the city of Montpelier in a joint effort to help with fundraising and helped assist on Montpelier Alive and the city of Berry in conjunction with the city of Montpelier to put on a big event. Does that answer your question? It's kind of across the board. Thank you.
Related question. We, we approved the pass-through grant to the partnership from the state budget. It was for marketing purposes. It was an add-on to a quick meeting agenda. Was it like $20,000 of? And that's going to be used for marketing, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'll hold for when you come up then, but it sounds like there's $25,000 going to the partnership for marketing.
It's allocated through $5,000 for.
Thanks.
Councilman Boone. So I know you put down here that the $81,335 is level-funded, but that's including the ballot item. And I wouldn't, I think that the manager's proposal was to put you at 64.
Sixty-eight, five-three.
Sixty-eight, five-three. Why is that more than? Oh, sixty?
Sixty.
Eight, okay. Okay, that makes more, a little more sense. So I, I know that, because I feel like it's just giving you a heads-up. I'm not going to support adding that into the budget. So if you're, if you're still wanting that, you're going to want to get the votes for that, for a ballot.
Do that as a.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want, from my, I just want to be honest with you. From, from my perspective, it's, I'm going to have to go with what the manager is suggesting on this. I mean, we're in such a, and I understand that everybody's in a tough spot. I just want to give you a heads-up on where I am.
We understand. It's extremely tight financial times, and we're prepared to bring it to the voters if that's what's needed.
Right. Yeah, it would, it would require the petition.
Thank you. That's the question.
I just don't want you to come, you know, find out at the last minute that, hey, that's all.
Understood. Thank you.
But I might lobby him.
Sonia Spalding, you're being raised, and then Councilman Lozon?
Thank you.
Well, and me after Councilman Lozon, please.
That's good. Sonia Spalding, then Councilman Lozon?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ame, thank you for the presentation. I was curious if you could talk about, if you will have specific KPIs for FY24, because the only, the only KPI I've seen for this year are regarding social media, and you have clear objectives and initiatives, and I wonder if you'll have other metrics that you're going to be able to present to us for next year?
Additional KPIs for next year?
Well, specifically regarding the objectives that you have, that included in the packet, because social media is important for marketing, but I wonder if we could have more information about what some of those other objectives that you have, and we could get some key performance indicators about those as well.
Yeah, we would be happy to produce some KPIs and just general statistics around our objectives for fiscal year 24. You know, I'm back here looking at that objective slide as a point of reference, but the work we'll be gearing up and are already doing around the Prospect Heights project is going to be huge and certainly a very trackable project, so happy to provide that information. All the work we're already doing around, you know, co-facilitation and marketing that we do for the Berry area, and, you know, specific information that we provide every month to our Board of Directors. We send that out to this entire council and other stakeholders as well, and I'm certainly happy to highlight that specifically to, to councilors and to community members as well, more clearly, or in a separate email if you'd like, but that information is, is provided monthly to our Board of Directors and all of our community stakeholders.
I just, as a follow-up, I feel like it would be helpful for community members to understand what we're paying for, and while the social media KPIs is important, I think it's important for, since it's being rolled right into our budget, it's important for all of us to understand what are we getting for the money that we are putting towards the BADC.
Quick follow-up on that. The reports that I've seen, it's all narrative-based. I haven't seen like linear tracking of how the investment translates into like typical measures of economic development, jobs, real estate growth, startups. Although startups have been listed individually, I haven't seen like quantified reports like that, and certainly like getting impressions and engagements and followers I see value in, but if we're talking about $25,000 for the partnership and a different, additional $20,000 for you, while the city's facing very severe financial constraints because our grand list has not been growing, I, I think we need to know, like, what are we getting for that marketing?
Happy to provide that in some visuals and graphics and charts, certainly, and, and with this Prospect Heights project, we're really excited that we're going to be a part of helping to boost and grow that grand list, hopefully in the, you know, short to long-term, five to 10-plus years, quite considerably. But certainly happy to put that in some graphics and visuals, right? It is provided in a narrative form every month.
Counselor, I think it was Councilman Lozon and Councilwoman Wazzaak?
Thank you. Just a comment, thank you very much for the work you're doing. I mean, obviously, I worked very closely with you as a member of the Berry Community Relief Fund Board, and also as a member of the Prospect Heights Development Board. You're doing a great job, and I hope, you know, earlier in the meeting, we heard the manager talk about investment, investment in some of the flood mitigation that we did on Brook Street, and investment in people, investment in preparing, and how that investment paid off. And I feel the same way about Berry Area Development, certainly the work you're doing with Prospect Heights. I hope it's not lost on anyone how momentous it is to be named number one by the Regional Planning Commission, to have them say, this is the highest priority project currently in Central Vermont. That is huge. That certainly isn't something that, it isn't something, you know, we didn't have long to work on it last year, and we certainly weren't named number one, but for you to take it that far, you're doing a great job, and I will be supporting this budget because I do support investment in the community, and I do believe that a rising tide lifts all boats. So thank you.
Councilwoman Wazzaak.
Thank you. I don't mean to be redundant, so I'll just make it, but I agree that the, the social media stuff is helpful, but I think it would be nice to see some other like quantifiable KPIs. And I will not be supporting any additional funding beyond what was not approved by the voters in a separate ballot item, but what was budgeted in the City General Fund last year. That's my position for the Partnership, that's my position for BADC, and that's my position for the Aldrich Library, on whose board I sit, because the, just the financial realities of the city budget are just calamitous, and we need to count every single penny that week. So that's my stance on all three of them. So I just wanted to get around about that.
As I say, your fundraising record has been really tremendous. Were you going to add to that?
The fundraising reminded me, and my favorite part about your presentation, because we should always list the things that we like, was the, the proportion of funds that have been distributed by the Community Relief Fund, because, you know, I've heard a lot of frustration with the Vermont Community Foundation funding, that they raised a bunch of money at the beginning, and it's been slow to get out the door, and that has not been true with the Berry Community Relief Fund, so I just thank you.
Yeah, and the Berry Community Relief Fund Board is really to thank for the distribution of all those funds. Tom Lozon, Sonia Spalding, Jonathan Williams, Dave Rubel have really been amazing to work with.
And the, the real heart and soul of the Berry Community Relief Fund is the folks who don't sit on the board, but score the applications for us. I mean, honestly, we have, we have to review everything, but we have the easiest part of the job, so we actually will be celebrating them in January to just thank them for their efforts, because they really did, you know, a yeoman's job, scoring all of the applications and getting things to the board quickly, so thank you to them for that.
So I would, to bring it back to, my point is that, yeah, I think that $500,000 is amazing. It's awesome to see you leveraging that much outside funds to support businesses, not only businesses, which is your core, you know, bread and butter mission, but so many residents too, as an ancillary supporter to, and kind of jumpstarter, as you say, to the, to the relief fund. I remembered from your last presentation here, you had talked about getting a grant for the Berry Town portion of the funding that was not matched in there by their voters, and I was wondering if you were able to find outside funding sources to kind of leverage additional funds that aren't on just taxpayer-funded?
Great question. So we are actually in the process of converting to a 501(c)(3), which will allow us to actually leverage and open doors to granting options, as, as, as has been planned for some time. So hopefully that answers your question.
Did you get a grant, though, to cover the Berry? Because you said you were going to get a grant.
No, we didn't, no.
Okay.
No. We need to be a 501(c)(3) to properly apply for grants, really, as a six. It's not something that you can really do.
Is that, what's the process for that? Because I know, I remember you talking about that last time you were here.
Along the way, I'm thinking it'll be done by January 30th. It's a process of really accounting and legal, looking at our bylaws and filling out the proper paperwork with the IRS and making the switch.
Yeah.
The challenge is, form a new 501(c)(3) is pretty much just file some paperwork and get going to change.
It's a conversion.
Okay.
We're not forming a new organization. We're converting a 30-plus-year organization to a 501(c)(3). But it's, it's close to being done, so that will open up opportunities for us in the new year.
And since the, since the Berry Town voters didn't match Berry City voters last year, and we're paying more than Berry Town voters are for BADC services, I'm wondering, are we getting more, or, and do you expect that Berry Town will come up with more money this year, or do you think it'll be the same scenario this year as last year, where Berry City pays them for more?
I can't speak to Berry Town. I'm presenting in a couple of weeks to Berry Town. We're proposing the same amount, as you saw, proposing a level-funded budget to them as well. You know, Berry Area Development's approach to the two municipalities that we support is equal. We're here to serve both municipalities. I don't honestly try to divvy up and chop up the time. I think the flood really provided a different lens from which to look through a lot for us, especially in these past few months. Obviously, as we know, the city of Berry, you know, from, you know, just what our naked eye can see suffered a lot of damage from the July flood, and our work, you know, with businesses and with marketing and everything else, certainly through some lenses, you know, one might say, well, there was so much more done for the city than there was for the town. These things ebb and flow, you know, and I think what's, what's good for the city is good for the town, and what's good for the town is good for the city. It's an area that we're here to support. So hopefully that answers your question, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And if you came up with quantifiable KPIs on your own as a board, would you be willing to put that into a grant agreement with the city for the funding that we pass through to report on those KPIs on a quarterly basis to the city council?
Well, sure. I mean, we can certainly turn our monthly board narratives into KPIs and provide some, you know, statistics that we can, we can give to you and report out on. We provide that, that update every month in our board meetings, and if you need it in a graph, we can certainly do that. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just say, in defense, it does look like, based on the sort of social media content, the majority of the content was in Berry City.
The content was focused on Berry City.
And, yeah, looking at it.
Honest, it ebbs and flows.
Yeah, no, no, I know, but I'm, what I'm saying is that, as we talk about, you know, that, that particular amount of money, it does appear that, you know, we definitely got more out of it.
Joel, I'm sorry.
I'll just add, you know, we're certainly hoping that Berry Town, you know, will increase their funding for, for the next fiscal year, but, you know, the way things have evolved, and as Ame said, we represent both communities, so we want to be fair to both, but, you know, I think we've had a lot of focus in Berry City as of late, and so I think that, yes, we appreciate, you know, that we did get more money from, from the city for this year, but I think it's, it's, it's paid off because, you know, our focus has, has really, you know, been increased, you know, with the city. We're not losing sight of the, the town, certainly, because we do represent both, but, you know, as Ame said, what's good for the city is good for the town and vice versa. And, you know, we look at, at areas as one, so.
Joel Mulvaney?
Hi. Thank you for your report, and I agree that it would be a good idea to either begin collecting some data that can show the efficacy of your work, but also revealing the data that you do collect. My concern is more to the point, and you'll find a theme tonight for me, and that is how few Berry City folks you have on your, on your Board of Directors. So I would encourage you to create a better balance there so that we feel a higher level of comfort when it comes to the decision-making process. My child who's in the legislature keeps reminding me how government works in terms of if the people who make the decisions are, the people who are missing from the table of decision-makers is. So I would encourage you to create a better balance. I believe there's only one person or maybe none from the.
No, no, that, that's not true. I don't know what the number is. I know you have, you have two Berry City residents that are here tonight.
Right.
Three, actually, was Steve McKenzie, so. There, we, historically, we tried to have a balance. We wanted an equal number. I mean, we have 15, so we couldn't have it equal, but we wanted at least, you know, seven and seven, and then we, we used to have, historically, one, you know, from outside of Berry, but we've been challenged. You know, you heard from Steve McKenzie earlier in getting, you know, Berry City people onto our board, so that's why we've relaxed that restriction, and, but I think we've got, you know, adequate representation from the city the way we've got it today.
And I'll just add, there are six Berry City board members on our board, but to your point, Jolene, we're in the throes of a strategic plan for the Berry area, and we're looking at what are the needs of the city and the stakeholders in the city, and what are the needs of the stakeholders in the town as well as a part of the strategic plan? What is the vision for the Berry area, which is inclusive of both the city and the town?
Michael Dearing, Councilor Dearing?
I just want to remind folks that the Berry City also has both me as their council liaison and city manager, Sarah LaCastro, that attends monthly meetings and helps make decisions as well, giving input based on what the city's best interest is. So the city's not being worked over by a lack of city representation, that if there are tough questions that need to be asked at the board meetings, they are asked, and like Ame said, they're open if you want to go. They're also providing paperwork every month about what they're doing. They may not be completely public because of some of the stuff that's going on is confidential, and we don't want to ruin business deals, but there is a great amount of work that's being done on behalf of our community, and I really don't want our residents to feel like they're, they're being pushed aside because of some bias or some lack of representation. That I can guarantee you that your representation on Berry City is firmly held with myself and the city manager.
Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I'll just, I'm looking at your Board of Directors right now, and just going down the list, the ones that are from Berry Town, a majority of them, if not all, are either business owners in Berry City or property owners in Berry City, and sometimes both.
Councilman Lozon?
Thank you. We talk about performance measures. We talk about, well, I talk about return on investment, which is sort of the same thing. And I'm looking at this list of businesses, so Earthly Wonders, Optical Expressions, Taste Vermont, Fox Market, depending on the product mix, CB Hair, oh, no, they wouldn't be, Tally. City of Berry is going to get, not the Town Berry, City of Berry is going to get 1% of their revenue in the form of a local sales tax. Sitting on the Board of Directors of the Berry Community Relief Fund, if you want those stats, we don't share them with the public, because the folks to whom we are handing grants out to, businesses and individuals appropriately, we don't share that. That is not public information. But I can tell you as a board member, it is very heavily weighted towards Berry City. So again, thank you for your help in raising that half a million dollars on behalf of the folks that we were able to give those grants to, the businesses and the individuals, and I think if we measured that, I, I think the $25,000 that you're talking about would pale in terms of how much money you helped us raise and how much we were able to distribute to Berry City residents and businesses. So again, thank you for that.
One thing is, I think there's some intangibles involved in this. And half statistics, but who would have known at the beginning of the year that we were going to have a flood in July? And there was an organization here that could step up and help things happen. And I'll, I'll speak a little bit out of turn, but the next speaker is Oliver Flabber, which I'm, I'm on the board, and that's another organization, that the fact that they were here will provide resources and things that really helped a lot as those organizations stepped up. Prospect Heights is another example.
Oh, somebody online is asking you to speak in the microphone, David.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want me to say that over again?
Just, just that the intangibles, that. I think, just, just that the intangibles, that organizations like BADC or Aldrich Library, we couldn't plan for a flood at the beginning of the year, but the fact that these organizations were here and had structure and had active boards and involvement meant that when those sorts of things come up, there are organizations here that are able to have some vision and step forward and contribute to solving the problems. So I just say that because I think all the statistics are great, but there's, there's an intangible that goes with that as well.
Statistics are very important, but to your point, David, course correction is as well, and dealing with emergencies and organizations stepping up and, and coming together, as so many did in this community, is, is really what it's about in terms of public service.
Any final comments or questions? All right, thanks.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Oh, I, I see one more, Ellen Kay?
Yeah, I'm gonna keep my camera off, if that's okay. Can you just clarify for me, I might have, it got, it went by pretty fast. Now, you're asking for, from city council, and the, and did you also say that you would also be trying to get an additional request on the ballot, and if so, for how much?
So our, our request is for eighty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-five, and last year, I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me, I believe the ballot amount was for twenty-four thousand, is that correct, city manager?
Twenty thousand four hundred eighty-two.
Twenty-four thousand, okay. So if, if the, the council decides that, that amount should go before the voters, then we would be proposing that and, and putting forth that, that ballot item.
So you're talking about a hun- a hundred thousand?
No, 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 no. We're, we're talking, our, our request, our request for, is for level funding. So currently, in the fiscal year twenty-four, which we're in, we were, we were, we were granted eighty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-five, that is what we're proposing now.
That's between the, what the voters voted and what the city allocated.
Which was a special one-time allocation for marketing.
The marketing request.
Yeah, so I, I don't.
This is no longer a special one-time allocation for marketing, and the cost of our operations is eighty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-five for the fiscal year twenty-five. What we're asking for is that amount, understandably, these are extremely dire financial times.
So just to clarify, so everyone's on the same page, the request before council right now is in the amount totaling what was in the general fund budget, as well as what was approved by the voters. This request would put that entire sum of money into the city budget's general fund. If the council is not agreeable to that, BADC is saying that they will again seek that difference between what the council is willing to give them and what they're asking for at the voters as a separate ballot item for additional funding.
That, that is what I thought I heard, and I want to say that all of that money is taxpayer money, correct?
Yes.
It is. Thank you very much.
And I suppose, you know, it could all be put on the ballot, too, not be included in the budget, it's just where it's, where's it, where's the approval authority gonna reside? And what I hear BADC saying is that if council doesn't agree to fund you with the voter-approved allocation of last year, you will go back to the voters for that and get, collect the signatures to do so.
No matter how much, like if, even if council said, well, fifty-five, you're gonna up it to get your eighty-one.
And even though that's, even though there's $25,000 for marketing that you're coordinating with Berry Partnership for.
We're not coordinating with Berry Partnership on marketing dollars, and this isn't for marketing allocation, and I think that, you know, the work in the year ahead, especially with our work with the Prospect Heights project, it, our work is crucial to the success and further development of housing and businesses in Berry City, and I'm gonna keep the town out of it just for this discussion alone, but of course, the town's a part of it. So, you know, we feel this, this general operating amount of eighty-one thousand dollars is what we need to continue our good work, especially as we begin to address housing, if that answers your question, yeah.
So, yes, the, the total ask is the eighty-one three thirty-five. I, I would certainly hope that at a minimum, you would level fund in the budget the sixty or sixty-one thousand, and if you, you know, were agreeable on a separate ballot item for the difference, you know, we would be, we're fine with that.
Just as we did last year.
Right.
And to be clear, I am not in favor of that, because everything has changed since last year, so I will not, I'm, I'm in favor of level funding for general fund funding, as you were last year, and I will not vote to send to the voters additional funding. If that is a request that's happening, I'd encourage you to start collecting signatures.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So it takes us to the Aldrich Library, and we have.
And, and you are, who, who are you again, sir? Alrighty.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Pope, and I'm President of the Board of Trustees at the Aldrich Library, and thank you for having us tonight, it's our pleasure, but it's my great pleasure to introduce you to Kristin Bowman, who is our new library director. Kristin joined us in October, and she has a passion for libraries, a passion for the service in this community, and she's jumped right in, and we're, we're having a good time. It's fun, and it's friendly at the library, and you should all come visit, so I encourage you to do that, and I will, David Sickel is here with us, too, he's the treasurer of the library, Teddy is also on our board, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Nice to meet you, Kristi.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Oh, Kristin, I should have said, Kristin comes to us from having served as the library director on Block Island, off the coast of Rhode Island, and she has moved here to Vermont, and, and in her roots, we interviewed her the week after the flood.
That's right.
It's all waterfront property, Kristi.
We did not have any candidates drop out after the flood, I will say that.
Kristin, great to have you.
And with a little luck, my moving truck arrives tomorrow, and I really do start living here. I've been at my dad's in Middlesex for quite a time. So yes, I was at a council meeting and you weren't here, so nice to see you, and I think everyone else was here, and it's nice to be back in the room, and thank you for having us. I, I'll start, yeah, we'll start, I, I, just as, you know, some basic library, you know, I represent everybody when I come to you, right?
Sorry, Kristin, just tell me when you want me to go to the next.
Yeah, I'll give you a. You know, all the patrons, all the patrons that will be future patrons, the staff, which I think some are watching, or maybe some are in the room, no, they're not, but they said they would try, the Friends Organization, the trustees who are represented in the room, you know, I, I represent everybody with this request tonight, and I think it's important for you to remember that we serve everyone, right? We, in, in my world, in library world, we call that cradle to grave, right? We, we do every demographic in there as effectively and as efficiently as we can. This budget that we're, well, the budget isn't with us today, but I'm happy to come back and give it to you. I am the rookie in the room, so let me know what else you want from me, or need from me, or would like to see from me, but the last time I was in this room, we were here till like almost eleven, and I went home in a blizzard, so, and I know you've done that a few more times since, so I am a little bit short and simple tonight, but again, I'm happy to come back. So we'll start with this, Teddy, I'm hoping you can play that.
Oh, the video, let me.
It's, it's, it's embedded in the bottom, if you can't play it from there.
My browser is up to date, that's good.
This would be all our statistics, so it would be.
Oh, can I just click? Oh!
There we go, cool.
There you go, do we have some volume?
Maybe?
Wow, sixty-three thousand.
Maybe not, we might not have volume.
That's okay.
And I don't want to mess with it.
It's just a little background music. That's a big number. That's a lot of work right there. That's a big number.
It's impressive.
Yeah, that's a lot of work, right? Because we have to keep that all running, going, operating.
Oh, it's continued, there's sometimes, here we go, see, it's skipping around a little bit. There's sometimes a delay.
This is, this is a statistic about programming, this is authors at the Aldrich returned.
There we go.
These are people that use the building, that, that's, these are not our programs, but programs that we host. This is a moment of pride for us. And so that's just a little snapshot of what we did last year, what we're capable of doing, what we're prepared to do again. All right, Teddy, now you're moving right ahead, okay.
I didn't want the video, I didn't want the video to keep looping.
So, yeah, so maintenance is a huge part of our budget, it has increased by three-hundred-and-fourteen percent, that seems like, how could that possibly happen? That happens because the trustees have taken a very proactive approach to maintaining the building. We have all kinds of service contracts to keep that building running and to have it be as green as possible, as efficient as possible, and to keep everybody safe in there coming in and out. We go out for bids for those service contracts, and this last point, previously relied on volunteers that have aged out, is the truth, right? We had people that mowed the lawn, shoveled the sidewalk, maybe helped in other ways. I was told that those were past directors' husbands. When I was told that, I was like, well, you know, I don't have one of those, so that's, that's not where we're at this year, so that, that's, that's a real number. As everybody in the room knows, utilities increase, as the town, the city manager has said to you, you know, we're obligated to union contracts, as is the city employees, those wages have increased and our insurance costs have increased. So we're working on a budget, next slide.
It's coming.
Can we go back one?
I've got rising costs, maintenance, and then I've got how do we meet rising costs?
Can you go one more? Okay, so maybe I'm in the wrong thing. Okay, rising costs, how do we meet rising costs? So this is a great statistic, since fiscal year twenty-one, investment transfers from the Board of Trustees' investment accounts have increased by a hundred percent. In fiscal year twenty-one, it was a hundred and two thousand dollars were transferred over this year, they're gonna, they're budgeting to transfer over two hundred thousand.
And just to explain, what an investment transfer is, to transfer from, into the operational budget from your.
Endowment.
Endowment.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Correct, yep.
And to Board President Pope's great chagrin, we have, the Board has.
And, 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 you know, that's only possible because of the trustees were prudent, and they, and they kept their investments in there and kept them growing, and so now it's a possibility that we can even entertain that. Yes.
Councilor Deering?
What percentage do you guys take out of that per year?
We try to do it at approximately four percent.
Okay.
There's multiple, it's not just one account, there's multiple other places, they all, yeah.
Some, some of the funds are restricted.
Right.
And some of them, you know, are at, at towards discretion. That, that, I know the fact we have to.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure, sure, the doubling, the payment coming out wasn't gonna make sure you guys were in a bad position, so I'm just kind of crunching a little bit in my head.
Yeah, that's correct.
Part of it is, we've been fortunate to get more donations.
Sure. Thank you.
You want to say anything else on that? Okay. So increasing our non-resident fee, this is, this is about making sure that people that come to the library and use the library who are not Berry City or Berry Town residents are paying what is the dollar amount that you pay. If we looked at what you contribute to the library as the city and as the town, and divide that by the number of residents, that's, that's about twenty-nine seventy-four, I think, and that might be in another slide. And so when we ask non-residents to pay twenty-five dollars, that's, that's not really fair to anybody, so we're looking at that, that's not going to be a huge increase into our budget, but it is important to us that there, that there's fairness and equity across the board there, so we're looking at that. We're budgeting ninety-five thousand dollars in fundraising and donations, we're budgeting twelve thousand in user fees, that's a low number, and I want to say a couple things about that. One is that, right, that's, that's part of our, our job and our business, is to make sure that it's usable by everybody in the city and in the town, and you don't want it to be expensive for people to come and have their things printed, or, or copied, or, you know, whatever that user fee is. And it also means that we're not fine-free yet, yet, right? Fine-free is a really important place, I think, for us to get to and for the Board to get to, and I think that we'll all get there, but we're not there yet, so, and, and maybe we can't be, maybe we need that one or two thousand dollars that we collect in fines to, to make this budget work, so, so, so fines are still included in that number. We pursue grants, right now, we're on the table for twenty thousand from the Vermont Department of Libraries, twenty thousand from the American Library Association, we're real, I, I looked at something today, that's from the Vermont Preservation in Seventy, Seventeen-seventy-two Foundation, about preserving our historic building, we were eligible for that, so I will apply for that, so, so we look for those, we look for those, and we work at that. And then we, we get city and town appropriations. You'll see in, in a future slide what the state average is across Vermont, and that we remain below that from support, but that's how it is. And, and again, we recognize that, we, we come here asking for level funding as a partner with you in this town, recognizing the difficult situation you're in, and, and this is where it brings us. Next slide. So this is a level-funded request. There's the average per resident, twenty-nine sixty-seven, and across Vermont, it's probably not many towns that have five thousand plus, but it is forty-one ninety-seven for those towns on the average. This level fund, I think we're already at the next slide, Teddy, please? Yeah, so we're, we're working on a thirty, over a thirty thousand dollar deficit with this budget, with this level-funded request. It's unknown how we'll get there, we'll get there from, you know, from the lead that the city manager has had, we're gonna look at every dollar, we're, we're not gonna print in color, as you get quoted for many times. We, we don't have the building cleaned every day that we're open, which is somewhat problematic, but that's how the money plays out. We'll look at, I sub now, as a salaried employee, it's, I, I have set out that the preference is for me to sub, instead of having someone come in when someone is out or leaves early, or, you know, we, we've had it all in the building so far, without scaring anyone, but, you know, those illnesses are around, and we've had them all, and people couldn't get to work today from flood, and, and so on and so forth, you know, so, so, so we're looking at how we staff the building, and then we'll see where we're at with the thirty thousand deficit. That's a deficit for this operational budget, or for fiscal year twenty-five's operational budget, and, and I come today, you know, level-funded, and as Nancy said, I'm passionate about libraries, and, and people in the room know that, and people on the screen know that, and we have partners in town that we're working with, and, and, you know, we're gonna do a lot of things, you know, so when we don't even reach our budget, we can't, we can't grow, right? And, and we need to move as a community into a growth mindset, which is what you talk about with your agendas, more housing, more businesses, more income, you know, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna help you play a role in all of that, right? The stronger our library is, the more successful everyone's gonna be in town, and so when, when we can't even fund where we're at, we can't grow, but I'll be back, and we'll talk about it again, and it may not be fiscal year twenty-five, but I'll be back, and we'll talk about it again. So that's where we're at, and, and, and this is, you know, where, where we're going, we want to continue our strong partnership with you, we, we do come in with a level-funded request, we know it's, we know it's bad, but we do look forward to more conversations about growth and where we can go. growth and where we can go. And I, I just made a couple notes while I sat here tonight.
Sorry, is there a next slide that I should?
No, there isn't. It's just a thank you and how beautiful the library looked from our Friends fundraiser last month. But just a couple notes I have from tonight, from tonight alone in this room. You know, when you want to talk about river science, we can put materials out. When you're talking about flood resistancy, we can put materials out. We can hold community conversations. We were there when the flood happened. The North End Development, you know, give us the maps, have them in the public building. You know, let us know how we can help with that. What's the map? What's the conversation? Do you want a feedback, a feed, you know, a box, a feedback, you know, box in the library? You know, we can help with that. All community conversations. My friend Adam left there already, but you know what? He's going to have that canvasser training in the library. I'm going to make sure that that's in the library. We can do that. Charter revisions, public information, make sure we have that on our desk. All of that happens at the library or can or should or will in the future. So we're here as your partner and we have a great staff. I'm proud to have been hired and worked with them. And thank you.
Kristen, thank you, Nancy and David, thank you so much for the great overview and especially the quantifiable metrics of how the impact you're making in the community and so many lives and people walking through the door.
So many.
Incredible regional institution.
Yeah.
And.
And there's more work. You know, the city manager got an email from me late today. Counselor Dearing has, has targeted me, you know, there's work.
Oh!
You did? No, not a bad one.
That sounds horrible!
No, no, no. He, and, and someone is on the Zoom who can speak to it, you know, but, you know, we, we, we need to work with some more agencies in town. You know, there's, there's, there's some things that we want to work on, that we're dealing with as, as, on the front line there of some social, economic, mental health issues. And we want to be better at that, and we will be.
It's great to hear. And also, I was just going to note what, how, how great it is to have the meeting space that you offer for nonprofit organizations all over this city and in, and in the region and how much money or outside money you're lever, you're leveraging. A lot of libraries around the state, as you well know, are municipal libraries and they're on the, and they're on the budget and they're getting the same increase, similar increases that the police department, the fire department, and the planning department, the clerk's office are, are getting. But fortunately, we have a standalone nonprofit with an endowment that can leverage a lot of outside money and give the taxpayer value, taxpayers such a great value for this, these incredible services. And I, I appreciate it and see the financial constraints you're facing. I know like that upstairs lift has had issues and.
We wrote, we wrote a grant for that, so fingers. I mean, you know, when you're not ADA compliant, you should get the grant. It was sort of like redundant for me to keep saying that in the grant application, like, we need that, so we'll see.
I also appreciate that the library's never come into this council and said, we'll hardball, hardball you and say, we'll just go to the voters if you don't give us exactly what we want.
Yeah, no, you know, we go to the voters.
So I appreciate that.
Yeah, we, we go to the voters and they support us. We, our annual appeal is out and, and thank you to everyone who has responded to that already. And when we were entering that debt data today, we had people that had never given to the library before. So, so they are voting and they're voting with their dollars and they want to see that library functioning.
Any questions for Counselor Talkwell?
So the 30,000 deficit, you'll just take more out of the endowment to cover that?
No. No, no.
Nancy may run me out of the city.
That'll be a little bit of where we at, where are we at right now and how can we save? What, what can we save right now? That'll be some readjustments. You don't know.
You know, fiscal '25 seems a long way away for us, just as it does for you. And that's the dilemma, right? We're trying to project, it feels like a long time. We're going to count our dollars as they come in, the annual appeal. That will give, you know, every time we, we have a new benchmark that we can feel more confident about, and we'll look at this budget again. So for us, it's still pretty early in the process, although we understand your process and the dates and how everybody has to make a budget. You know, we wait, wait, wait until May for Barry Town to make their decision. So we'll see what happens through these months and we'll be creative. We'll, we'll, you know, perhaps do a little bit more fundraising, but I do feel that the library does a substantial amount of fundraising in our community between the Friends effort, which is substantial, and how they support us, and then our, our own appeal. So I think the public has, has done their individual parts, but, you know, we'll, we'll keep looking at it. So it's not clear exactly how we'll close that deficit.
Thank you.
Counselor Dearing?
Want to say a couple things. First, I really appreciate everything that you do at the library. I appreciate your communication with me as well. I really enjoy hanging out down in the library, down in the children's room with my son and the rest of my kids as well. And my question is, do you feel comfortable that with the level funding budget that you're asking, that unlike, some people feel that with that level funding budget that we're going to be cutting services to the library and to the community, putting them at a disadvantage? Do you believe that's true or do you believe that's not correct?
I think it's precarious.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I hope, I, I, we're committed to not cutting anything. And we have to look at every dollar, as Nancy just said, you know. I, I am, I, I am committed to the services that we currently provide. I'm committed to the staff that we currently have on staff. And I, I think we have to be very careful with every dollar so that we can continue those, that service. It is a $30,000 deficit. We will look at things like, you know, how, here's a great example. We just got a, in touch with an agency that will give us computers and, and monitors. Will they be great? We don't know. They're used, right? Will, will they be better than the ones we have? Maybe. Does that mean we won't spend $10,000 on laptops? Maybe. So now we're at 20,000, right? We, we will be actively pursuing that so that we can not go backwards.
But you don't see a cut in hours or, or anything like that right now, based on level funding?
It's so hard to tell with.
Sure.
That far out.
Okay.
Same challenge the city has. A big chunk of the budget is made up of.
Right.
So that's, I mean, the city's certainly facing that and, and the library could be too.
So I think like the really, like there may be cuts or there may not be cuts under this funding request. We just can't.
Rachel Van Vliet?
Hi there, Rachel Van Vliet. This is my first city council meeting. I appreciate everyone. What was that?
I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
Oh, no worries, no worries. I'm a special educator at Barry Town School. I'm the president of the Barry Educators Association, the union for the teachers in paras in our district. I previously served as a trustee at the Fletcher Free Library and I got to work as a youth outreach associate, assistant for the summer reading program at the Fletcher Free Library. Because of that experience in schools and libraries, I really want to share my support and gratitude for the Aldrich Public Library. The library is a critical part of the community that supplements, enhances, and reinforces the work that's done in our schools. It offers our youth access to the internet and computers, diverse books, research materials, digital resources, after-school and evening programming, as well as the summer reading program. The library also promotes equity for our youth by providing these free and accessible resources, and it's an inclusive environment that supports learning and growth for all. Our community needs Aldrich Library and the library needs our support. Tonight, we've talked about investment, investments, and I think the city needs to make an investment in the library, which is an investment in our youth and our community and our future. And I think the budget should reflect the critical role that the library plays in supporting our youth and our community. Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel. Ellen Kay?
So what she said, really. Barry City, I am a librarian. That is my day job. The reason I, the reason I went to library school is that I deeply believe in the mission of libraries. It is an incredible idea that the library is our community's living room. It has all the books. You can curl up on a couch and read, and those books belong to all of us. And the librarians steward those. That's what a library is. In addition, libraries have come to fill social service roles that, where there are gaps. They literally keep people alive. And they provide access, access that people with money can get elsewhere. People with, people can, people get help finding jobs. They get help applying for jobs. They get help working, finding things on the web, getting help, work, applying for social services. Have the computers to do that if they can do it themselves. Have a safe and warm place to be. It's not just a library. It's not just books. That's what people were saying when I was becoming a librarian. You would hear, you know, what are libraries for now? Everybody can get everything online. Well, everybody can't get everything online. So libraries level the playing field and they are a public good. It's great that we, you know, support business development and other kinds of things in our city. But business, businesses do not always trickle down to the people with, of the greatest need. Libraries do, and it's very important that we understand their unique and vital role in our community. And lastly, I'll just say that I was one of those people on the library lawn every single Saturday for a month, helping disperse people to help people clean up around this city. We heard heartbreaking story, stories. We had people coming from all over the place who we helped with maps and all sorts of things, get to the destinations where they were most needed. The library gave us electricity. The library gave us tables. The library staff got there early and stayed late to make sure we could do this. We had clothing swaps on the lawn. It is our home. It is our third place in our community. So I understand how dire things are. But, you know, keeping the library going in a really sustainable way is going to help all of us. So thank you.
So well said, Ellen. I, and I, I'm, I'm inclined to be, I'm very open to seeing the library budget increase at the 5%, at a commensurate rate of the, with the 5% tax rate increase. And if it means reducing BADC's budget, I'd be fine with that because they're going to go to the taxpayers anyway and, and, and make their case. And so maybe they don't even need to have such a substantial funding in the city budget if they're going to take that approach. It's an approach I don't appreciate at all. And, and I, I would, I, I really value the approach and the contributions of the Aldrich Public Library, and, and I think it's a critical service. It's a service that would be on the city books if you weren't there anyway. And, and I, I hope the city council will support increasing what's in the manager's budget for the library, given their, their building needs and the ongoing operational costs to match what is in the city budget. And again, I'm willing to decrease the Barre area development corp if that's what it takes. Counselor, what was on?
Thank you. Thank you for a very thoughtful presentation. I got some nerd questions. So what does it cost to maintain your building, give or take? And these are just curiosity questions.
The building, it's.
Yeah, you, you mentioned that. And cost it increased by 314%. Give or take, what is it?
The budget for building. I have several. So our operating budget is $800,000.
Right.
And let's also give Kristen some credit for being on the job less than two months.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, no, no. I'm not trying, I'm not trying.
Look, get it to within the nearest $100,000. My point was simply thank you, because if you don't maintain and operate a library, Mr. Aldrich made sure when he deeded it to the city that it would always be a library. So it's the city's responsibility to have one. So thank you for that. Like I said, it was a curiosity question because we, Karen and I like old buildings, so we know how expensive it is to maintain them.
So the overhead and maintenance line for fiscal year '25 is 72,800, $73,000. Utilities are 65. That's all building.
Probably about right for a building of that size.
About right, yeah.
If you, if you have a good year with maintenance, if you happen to need a roof replacement.
Yeah.
It's kind of a problem. And I know utilities have increased for everyone. I mean, primarily that's, you know, that's oil-driven and propane-driven. Yeah, so that's pretty significant.
And you replaced the roof recently too, right? Or did roof work?
And what I was going to say is, I, I look at the library a little differently. I will absolutely support the funding request and accept the funding request of Barre area development and the Barry Partnership. Unfortunately, you don't fall into that category because I have a soft spot in my heart for libraries. So I can't make promises and I won't put one organization in front of another, but I'm going to work really hard to see if we can get you some sort of increase. Because I believe in libraries, I believe, people look at me and they judge, so they think I don't. But I remember when Alex, who is 31 now, when he was, is there such a thing as minus six months? Because he was three months in Karen's womb and she would read to him. She started reading.
Right, yeah.
And that continued, well, till he was 31. We had to have our Christmas a little early because Miranda was in. And Alex and Miranda got books because they do on every birthday and they do on every Christmas and they do on every special occasion. And at 30 and 31 years of age, when they're having a bad day or maybe a breakup or something didn't go right, if they're around, they'll look at Karen and they'll say, read to me, mommy. And so I just believe, you know, I believe that people who read, the, the kids, their, fondest memories are of packing a picnic lunch and they would go to the library when they were, you know, three and four years old and Karen would take them to the library. They'd each get a book and then they'd go in the park and they'd have a picnic lunch and read their books. And, I mean, statistics show that people who are exposed to reading, people who keep reading in their lives, I mean, generally speaking, they do better. Educationally, in terms of job performance, they simply do better. So thanks for the, for the work that you're doing. I, I believe in it. Like I said, I'm going to do my best to make sure that we can try to get you a little bit to close that $30,000 gap. And most importantly, I'm going to talk to my neighbors in Barry Town because sometimes they seem to give you such a hard time and I don't know, no, I mean, some, you got to, the hard conversations are the best conversations. Sometimes they give you a hard time and I don't understand why. You know, you're doing good work for everyone. When a child, I don't care if they live in the town or the city, if they can go down and pick up a book and, and take that book home and read it, they're better for it. Doesn't matter where they live. So I'll also make sure I lobby my friends in the town to support the library as well, to the same extent the city does. And I'm not going to play that they do this and we do that. That's, only dumb people do that. But thank you again. Nice to meet you. Nice job on your budget.
Thank you. When you go to lobby your neighbors, I'll, I'll give you some numbers.
Do that, please.
Just one other vignette. I've got a 13, well, soon-to-be 13-year-old granddaughter living in Plainfield. And I was visiting one day and she had this stack of books. I said, good God, where did you get all those? And she pulls out her library card. She said, Barry Library, this is my new card. So you've got people from other communities coming. Yeah.
Do you still do the pie? Is, did, you're a volunteer who does the pies? Yeah, is she still doing the pies?
She still does, but she, there must have been a pie raffle.
There was.
Did she?
I missed it. I heard you missed it.
No.
Yeah, it was Spring Fling, I think. I bit on a pie. I don't remember when it was. I think it was Spring Fling.
It was one pie, there was one pie a month for a year. Does she still do that?
No.
Okay. That was the one we wanted.
Good information for me.
Pie of the month club.
It was awesome. Thank you.
Did you have a question? Oh. Well, you know, we appreciate that. We, we are here and willing to make it work, but of course, we appreciate anything you could give us above and beyond. And I'm happy to come and, and advocate for that or, or work the budget for you and, you know, line by line, if that's helpful for any decisions you make in the future. And I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the job.
Thank you.
Great, that takes us to the Barry Partnership. Tracy?
No pressure. Where are you going, Dave? You do everything.
Do you have any open board spots, Tracy? I hear David is very bored now it is. Uh, oh, nope, that's all, uh, here it is. Lovely. All right.
All right. So, uh, Tracy Lewis, Executive Director of the Berry Partnership. There are thirty-eight slides, so we're gonna go through them real quick. So be ready on the button.
Okay, hold on, give me one second. Hold, let me just.
Look, he's already failing.
Oh, boy. I'm writing the words Berry Partnership presentation for God's sake. Oh, I'm just being a good note. BP, that's what I do, BP.
So I'm gonna go through quickly, uh, the last year, November, December of twenty twenty-two. Click.
I am clicking.
Um, last year, we, um, were able to, uh, do a grant and get the Light Up the City for the Mary Berry Holiday Season. In twenty-two days, we were able to raise five thousand dollars from the community where, um, and I'm sorry, the Better Places Program was able to, uh, double that. So it was a two for one match. Um, and next slide. We had, uh, the City of Berry Fighter, Fire Department help with the lights in City Hall Park. We had some amazing volunteers with the lighted garland down Main Street to get ready for the Light Up the City event. Next slide. Um, Small Business Saturday came. We do horse drawn carriage rides, um, events that businesses do, um, such as Next Chapter Bookstore. Next slide. And then last year I took on the Mary Berry Holiday Craft Fair. Um, that was an event that, uh, the Greater Berry Crafters Guild had done for thirty-nine years. And I took over and it was a great success. And, uh, that happened on the Saturday and Sunday after Thanksgiving. Next slide. And then, um, the Mary Berry Holiday Parade was Small Business Saturday as well. And Santa headed to, um, turn the lights on in the Light Up the City event, which is our next slide. Our Light Up the City, um, we were able to have Ally Tarwater, who was a, uh, teacher at Berry Town Elementary School, her husband. They did, um, some music. We had Dougie Fresh doing, uh, hot cocoa and some mores in the park. It was a great event. Um, and the top right picture was a photo, um, of, that Shannon took of the park last year. And, uh, this, this event itself and the lighting of the City Hall Park, I, the Berry Partnership was recognized by the Governor of the State of Vermont for, for that work and, um, we're really proud of that. Next slide. We did the Fourth Annual Holiday House Decorating Contest. We did the Business Decorating Contest as well. Uh, Nelson Street on the top right was, was one of the winners again, but we had some great entries and we're doing it again this year. Next slide. Other, uh, things that we do during the holidays to try to promote people to come and shop local, we have the Elf Contest. Um, we did the Mary Berry Holidays Business Gift Card. And then we did weekly posts for things happening in the weekend coming up to try to promote people to come and shop downtown and just be in our community. Next slide.
It's coming.
Christmas for Kids. Um, we help, um, do, we put the donor box on our website and collect donations from the community, um, to help raise money for the Christmas for Kids. I'm, try to go and help, uh, wrap presents every year as well. And, um, I, I just love, uh, the Christmas for Kids and, and helping with that. Next slide. Twenty twenty-three. Uh, Rebecca McKelvey was our Work-Based Learning Student for the, um, for last, uh, the fall, the winter and spring semester. It was her senior year. Uh, she was amazing, um, to work with. Next slide. Our Winter Market was, uh, something new that we brought in this past year. Uh, was at the Old Labor Hall. We did it every, or not every Wednesday, the last Wednesday of every month in January, February, March and April. It was from three-thirty to six-thirty. We plan to do it again, um, and make it even bigger and better this year. Next slide. Uh, these were the ribbon cuttings that we, um, held during twenty twenty-three. Earthly Wonders, Granite City Group Fitness, Quality Market, Emsley's, CB Hair Studio, Next Chapter, Tally, the Arcana Workshop, and Forbin's Finest. Next. We also finally got that resident guide put together and out. Um, it is on our website. And the QR code, um, and that is on our website and pinned on our Facebook page as well. So that if you just go to our, top of our page, you can get to that. Next slide.
Did that work before I go to the next slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we also brought in, uh, Recycled Percussion and this was something new that we tried. Um, and in conjunction with it, we did the Kindness in Berry Project where we asked all the students in all of the schools in, in the Berry area, um, what they thought kindness in Berry looked like. And it was a great, um, great project for them. And, um, we had the top ten winners of, or the finalists. Um, they get free, free tickets to the Recycled Percussion Show. Um, they received, uh, drawing packets and art packets from the Renita Marshall Helping Hands. Next slide. The event was amazing. It was at the Berry Auditorium. At the top right is, uh, the young lady that, uh, won her, um, drawing. Um, we actually had the Recycled Percussion Group pick the final winner out of the top ten.
Oh.
But it was, it was a great event. Next slide. Berry Bloom Flowers in Downtown. We try to bring some brightness to the city every summer. Um, a lot of our flower pots were flown, or swept away in the flood, um, but.
The July flood.
The July flood, not yesterday's. Uh, the Granite Center Garden Club, um, is huge in this. And they actually, um, talked to other garden clubs around the state and brought more pots after the flood to help brighten up the city. So that was something I really wanted to talk about and say thank you to them. Next slide. Um, in May, um, we had, we hosted the Vermont Designated Downtown Directors Meetup here in Berry. So it was something that used to happen prior to COVID. It hasn't happened in a couple of years. When we discussed it, I raised my hand and said, come to Berry, come to Berry. Um, so we had meetings, um, at the Old Labor Hall. We did chores of the city. The, the directors from all over the state of Vermont were able to see, um, and talk to some of our business owners. They saw the art splash that the Rotary Club put on. We had lunch at Cornerstone. It was just a great day. Next slide. Farmer's Market. We moved it this year to Depot Square and then the flood hit. And, uh, we ended up in City Hall Park and they loved it. Um, the vendors loved it. People loved it.
You asked about the vendors.
Yeah, they, they really loved it. So I'm hopeful for, uh, this coming year, we'll be allowed to stay in City Hall Park. Next slide.
Oh, next slide, please.
Come on, look at that.
This is gonna be. Oh, okay, I'm just gonna, okay, I'll go back.
Uh, the flood. Um, we'd all like to forget about it. Um, the one thing that I did, um, love about the flood was seeing the businesses and, and the people in the community and volunteers coming together and helping each other out. Um, one of the things that I did write off was going and talking to the business owners, seeing what their needs were, talking with, uh, the department heads and being that line of communication between them and the businesses. Um, and then getting out the information to the businesses for grant opportunities for, um, sump pumps and everything. Um, I was kind of the lifeline, I, I felt maybe. Um, and I don't want to have to go through that again. And yesterday I had major PTSD. So, next slide. In part, we, um, Berry hosted, um, a press release conference and, um, for the Vermont Relief Fund and Capstone. Uh, that was a great event here in Berry. Next slide. Concerts in Courier Park, Food Truck Thursdays. Those went on without a hitch. Uh, we did miss a few weeks because of the flood. We wanted to be respectful of everybody. Um, and then of course there was rain on several Thursdays. So, um, and one thing we did bring in new is the new gazebo over the top of the band stage to try to help when it rains, if it was light, light rain, but that wasn't the case. Next slide. Um, we planned the Heritage Festival. I planned the Heritage Festival for July and then with the flooding, um, it was decided that it should be postponed. So it was postponed to September twentieth and twenty-third. Um, next slide. Just go through some pictures. Um, the pictures on the left are from the fundraising event over at the, um, the Berry Elks Lodge, um, that helped raise money for the Berry Community Relief Fund. And then the pictures on the right are just, um, stage performance, uh, the fire show, which is a huge hit. And then Washington Street with all the vendors. Next slide. Fireworks, parade, pancake, or not pancake breakfast, the Rotary Breakfast. Um, it was a great, it was a great weekend. Um, it was perfect weather and, um, it was, it was just great. Next slide. And of course we couldn't do it without our sponsors. So our sponsors are listed, City of Berry, Town of Berry. Uh, the partnership puts it on, but Downstreet Housing, uh, Metro Development, Community National Bank, Cudi, Chevrolet, RK Miles, just to name a few, and even the gold and silver sponsors. There are many sponsors underneath that and we even get some donations from the community to help put on this huge event in, in Berry. Next slide. Um, in October, I believe it was, uh, I was awarded, along with Shawna Trader from the Rainbow Bridge Community Center. Uh, we were recognized at the Central Vermont Economic Development Corp's annual meeting for our flood relief. There were others that were, um, recognized as well, uh, but Shawna and I, uh, were from the Berry community. It was a great night. Next slide. Halloween in Berry. Um, we had our normal, uh, Halloween costume parade and co, business costume contests and downtown trick or treat. And, uh, because the police chief wanted it, we brought in a trunk or treat this year and around Courier Park. And it was amazing and I can't wait to make it bigger and better each year coming forward. But, um, it was just a great event, all of them. Next slide. Um, so Employee Appreciation Dinner. So, um, we did a little Mud Life Crisis. We tried to make a little fun of the, the flooding, that we had gotten through it. Um, we had Muddy Buddies. Um, so that was kind of our saying on the back of all the bags of muddy buddies. Uh, I was able to fundraise and offer this to businesses at a discounted rate so that they could bring, um, we could get more people to enjoy a fun night. And, um, we had two hundred and eighteen people, uh, the most ever. It was a great night. And I don't know if, when you click the next, if the little video will show.
Ooh, yeah.
It doesn't need to, it's fine.
Okay.
It's just a little video, um, uh, that Shannon had put together of a great night and it kind of shows what we do. We give out gifts and prizes and we play games and, and it's just a great night for all the business community. Businesses, their employees are all welcome to come. I would love to extend the invite to all of you to come next year. It was a great time. Next slide. Ninth Annual Granite City 5K. Because of the flooding, um, we were a little behind on promoting this and, and getting sponsorship. We also wanted to be wary of getting sponsorship from businesses that were hit during the flood. Um, so it wasn't, um, as successful as years in the past, but we are fine with that. Uh, the, the, um, the Granite City 5K in the past eight years has raised money for the Veterans Place in Northfield. And we are the Berry Partnership and, um, I want it to be in our community. So this now, the, the funding that we're raising for, from this event is trying to bring a facility, um, that is up in Colchester called Joshua's Place, um, for veterans. It's something that we would like to bring here into the Berry community. Um, it's a long-term goal. It's, um, we have a lot of fundraising to do, so it'll be several years, but, um, that is our plan to eventually be able to, um, do that in our Berry community. Next slide. Mary Berry Holidays Craft Fair came back, um, this year. Uh, last year was the first year I took it over, seventy-nine, eighty vendors. Uh, this year, um, a hundred and fifteen vendors signed up, one thirteen showed up. Um, it was crazy busy. It was hectic. Um, the vendors loved it. We've got some details to work out, making wider rows and stuff. Um, but, uh, all in all, it was a, it was a great event. Next slide. Uh, we did the Berry Mary, Mary Berry Holidays Light Up the City this year. Um, we had Mrs. and Mr. Claus. I won't say who that was. Um, and then we brought Dasher and Cupid, Cupid from the Vermont Reindeer Farm. We again had Ally and Jeremy Tarwater playing music and Dougie Fresh had hot cocoa and apple crisp. It was an amazing turnout. Um, it was just a great night. Next slide. Uh, the Mary Berry Holidays, Santas Coming to Town was last weekend. We're doing a Mary Berry Holidays Photo Fun Contest. Last week, five of these photo props were at five businesses. This week they're at five more businesses. We put it out on Facebook with clues as to where these photo props can be found. Um, I don't want to give any clues away, but one, one's at Aldrich Library. Um, we'll just see who's listening tonight. We'll see who's listening tonight. Uh, the Berry, uh, Business Decorating Contest, I put out the photos today for the community to start voting on what business they think has the most holiday spirit. Um, that post is going well. The Holiday House Decorating Contest is back for its fifth year. Um, I believe entries are due in by tomorrow. I will get the map out. People love the map where they can go around through the community and see all the lights. And then we'll be voting on what are the favorites. Um, next slide. Um, insights on social media. Last year I was at five K. This year I'm at sixty-five hundred followers. Um, this was just our big one. I didn't do a lot. Um, a lot of our stuff is talking to businesses and working with the businesses, doing the ribbon cuttings. Um, so this is just a small insight. Next slide is our budget proposal. We are asking for level funding. Um, this year I also, um, worked on the Vermont Downtown Coalition. And, um, through the work that we have done through the Downtown Coalition, we were able to, uh, secure a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the, called the Vermont Downtown Vibrancy Fund through the State of Vermont funding. Um, out of that twenty-five thousand, three thousand roughly will, um, ultimately go back into the Downtown Coalition for that continued work. So we can try to continue to get that funding each year. Um, and then with that funding, um, how I allocated it this year, because we lost, um, eighty-five percent of our garland and lights from last year's grant. I used some of that to purchase more garlands so that we weren't taking a step back and that our community could have the brightness still. And then the other, um, funding is going to, um, a social media and marketing manager to help me. They'll focus on social media and marketing and then I can do more work like grants, business development and things like that. Um, so level funding, last year the city funded, um, us seventy thousand and that's what we would like to share. Next slide. That's it. It's passed.
Very well done.
Thank you. Any questions?
Wow.
Was that a question?
I've just got lots of praise for you. I mean, I've been to many of the ribbon cuttings, many, many of the communications with businesses, even yesterday, where you're being proactive in everything that you're doing, making sure that you're really the heart and soul of our downtown. Um, people notice it every day when they drive through. They, they know that we have a heart and a soul in our downtown. And I really want people to know that a lot of that is because of you and the work that's going into it. So thank you for everything that you put into our community.
Ditto. And, um, similar to question that was asked of the Aldrich, will you be able to, you did a bunch of amazing work without the recovery of a natural disaster, will you be able to do everything next year or this coming, you know, for this fiscal year?
Especially with that, um, added vibrancy grant, um, that helps, um, we're, we're really, you know, w- we know what the city's struggle is and, and, um, we're definitely able to stay in that, in that realm and, and not ask for more.
Morale is, morale is a very real thing.
I, I, um, I have a competition with myself every time I. I, I have a competition with myself. Every time I do an event, I have to do it bigger and better every time. So it's my worst nightmare.
Councilor Shumbl.
Well, you've done a stunning job with the city this year. And this Christmas time, it is gorgeous.
Thank you.
Really. So thank you.
Thank you.
So you want to hand up online Sonia Spalding?
Thank you. So I have a similar question that I'm hoping you can answer, Tracy, that I had for the Berry Area Development. Well, I recognize that the, I recognize all of the effort that you put into all of the events. They're fabulous. I wonder if there are any metrics that you have, any measurement statistics about how the amount of money that the, we, that taxpayers are putting in to the Berry Partnership is coming back to the Berry businesses? How it's, you know, generating more revenue for those Berry businesses? And I'm also curious, because I didn't see it on that quick little, I tried to ask for the presentation beforehand, but it wasn't available. And so I didn't get a chance to really look at your budget spreadsheet, but I didn't see on there what your membership raises and where that is included in your revenue. So if you could just speak to those two questions. Thank you.
Yep. Our membership is, we get membership through fundraising and the businesses. I try to put them through as a sponsorship. So membership is under there as donations, membership and fundraising. So businesses that become members, I can help, I help promote. I do ribbon cuttings for all new businesses coming in, talk to them about being a part of the partnership and so that promoting Berry as a whole. As for metrics, I can definitely work on that and, and get it to, to you. It's not something I have today, but it's something I can work on.
There was a request to see if the budgets sheet could be shown.
Oh, the budget slide. Yeah, give me a second.
Thanks, Tracy. Is it Joel Mulvaney?
Hi. Similarly, my curiosity is about, you know, when we have these big events in the city, I'd like to know how that translates into income for merchants and restaurants. So for example, are you doing any data collection in that way? Like after a particular event, you pull the merchants and the restaurants to see, just to start to begin to make some comparisons in terms of what's the percent of increase whenever we have an event like that? Because those events also cost money for the city in other ways, like extra police protection maybe, or, you know, those kinds of things. So, and those are kind of the hidden costs that the city takes on without really being a part of your budget. So I'm curious about that. And my other question is, do the members who belong to the partnership actually pay a fee? Is there a membership fee? Thank you.
So our membership fee is $250 to businesses. I try to relate it to a sponsorship. So if a business wants to give me $250 to be a member, I put them as a sponsor of a concert to help them get extra added value promotion of them. As for events, Heritage Festival, Mary Berry Craft Fair, those two events bring a lot of people into the downtown. I know our restaurants have huge weekends, those weekends. As for the other businesses, the Mary Berry Holiday Craft Fair, as it brings people in the downtown, they do see an uptick that weekend. For Heritage Festival, not so much shopping happens during Heritage Festival. I do know that.
It would be, it would be good if we could collect some actual data and not have it be anecdotal. And the other, the other question I have is, yeah, so I'm, I mean, part of what I'm thinking about when I see all of the images of the holiday decorations, they're beautiful, don't get me wrong, but I see that it's mostly Christian-based in terms of, and it's not very inclusive, let me put it that way. There aren't a lot of images of other faiths being represented. So I, I just would suggest that you consider in next year's decorations that you maybe include some folks in the community from other faiths that may have different kinds of iconography and imagery.
Okay, yes. I try to keep the lights in the park all white, just to be, just the classic white. So not to be picking any.
Not the same as a menorah, for example.
Correct.
Councilor Stuckel.
I would like to know if you could track data like unique visitors and growth over time so that there, there were some ways of looking and saying, oh, it is the same thing as BADC. Okay, it's great that someone's following you online or it's great, you know, the, the events really truly are beautiful and wonderful. I love the lights. I don't know anyone who doesn't, but, so what does it do?
So I do know, and I have it somewhere at my office, that during the Heritage Festival of 2022, there were 15,000 people in the downtown for that Saturday. So I do have the metrics for that from, from a, I've lost my train of thought, but I have it.
What I'd like to also make sure that we're aware of is that the things that about our community, making you feel good, making the whole aura of our community, aren't things that we can really quantify with money as well. That the opportunities of trick or treating and having the extra police out, or being downtown with the holiday lighting or the Heritage Festival are all things that bring unique values to our community. And I'm not quite sure that there's a way that we can really put a number on some of these things. And I think it's important to try to figure out some of the metrics so we can get better. But I think a lot of the things that we're talking about are feel-good moments, moments that make our community uplifted in times when things are really crappy and devastating. So to have these opportunities, and then to me, when we question some of the monetary aspects of it, just kind of throw it up into the wind and say, well, what are you really doing it for? So again, I just want to say thank you for all the amazing heart moments that you've provided to this community.
Thank you.
It's definitely a tough, like interesting, tough role because you're doing a lot of community recreation, community buildings, you know, connections, entertainment for families, while at the same time, working to support downtown merchants. And there's been a lot of new merchants move in.
Yeah, there has.
This year, which is exciting to see. And, and definitely those events that open people's wallets and keep businesses thriving and people employed are awesome.
And the partnership's role is to bring vibrancy in the downtown. We want to give a place that people want to come and work, live and play and, you know, be here. And I feel like a lot of our work, you know, doing these events is, does just that. It gives people that homey, you know, hometown feel. And I, I get great satisfaction and pleasure when I, at the, the Light Up the City event, just seeing so many kids so happy and out on a cold Saturday night in November. That, that is huge because they don't have to. They don't have to come out. And I look forward to trying to do, do more things and different things to, to keep people coming back and bringing more into the, into the downtown.
Tracy, I have one question about the vibrancy fund. So for the $25,000, it looked like you and the BADC were really closely coordinating on a marketing campaign. Just based on my interactions with social media, seeing pictures of you and MMA, meeting with important people, promoting your organizations and putting posts out. Would you say that you're taking on that, that within your budget this year?
Our marketing, our, our budgets are completely separate. Our marketing budgets are completely separate. If we're at events, we're at events together. Shannon is the photographer for both BADC and the partnership. And she does their social media. And, but our marketing is, is for us.
You're doing your own social media, but you want to hire somebody to do your social media. Okay.
Correct.
Councilor Ozon.
Tracy, first of all, thank you. Thank you and thank you to Shannon. Wish Shannon was here. I think we all understand why she's not. But I just want to say, you're doing a great job. I so appreciated it. You know, people look at the partnership and they think they're only serving businesses. I don't think anything could be further from the truth. Was it in '22 you took the craft fair over?
Yes.
And you didn't get much notice?
No.
You got, you got, yeah, four months' notice that a major craft fair where there are, I mean, as small a business as you can get, some, a Vermont crafter sitting alone at home, producing their crafts, hoping they can sell them at the end of the year. I mean, it doesn't get, get much smaller than that. And you didn't have to pick that event up. And you did, and you ran with it, and you made it incredibly successful. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that because those people who displayed at the craft show, they so depend on that revenue on an annual basis.
And they also could become brick and mortar businesses if, if they continue to do events like this. So that's another thought in my head is get in with these businesses, these crafters. And if they want to open a business, hopefully I'm the first person that they talk to and they come to Berry.
And speaking of brick and mortar, you tried it yourself. And in addition to all of the other things that you're doing, I know your daughters are doing the yeoman's share of the work, but, but you're helping too and you're giving them advice. So, you know, I just want to say, I look at these events. I look at how you support our local businesses, how you promote our local businesses, but most importantly, how you promote Berry. And I just want to let you know how much I appreciate it. And thank you, as I said to the others, thank you for level funding your budget. Tough year for us, but it helps. So thank you again.
Bern Rose and then Councilor Booth.
Hi Tracy, I'm up here.
Hi Bern.
I just want to say thank you and acknowledge what Tracy mentioned, the farmer's market. But that happened, I think, just about every Wednesday. And we had quite a few people who came to the farmer's market, but we had several people who were also vendors, including Keith Cushman. One of the great things was we have a new farm in Berlin called Holcomb Farms, and they were there every single week, except for maybe one. And another farmer, but because of the difficulty with farming this year, it was a little smaller. And Tracy said that she thinks she has another farm vendor next year. Another thing that Tracy brought into that, which made, made the market affordable for people like myself on limited budgets and for people who receive three squares and SNAP, is she brought that program into the market. So that this summer tripled our buying power and we were able to support the people that came into the farmer's market. And I want to acknowledge that Tracy took a vacation and she would stop and answer her texts so that she could run our numbers in her computer on her phone and get us logged in. And that was really awesome, Tracy. Thank you for doing that.
Thanks Bern. I, when I went past the farmer's market, I did want to say that we were able, last year we were EBT and SNAP eligible. And I think I had like five transactions, transactions total throughout the summer. This year with the, the extra bonus of the crop cash and crop cash plus, if we didn't have five transactions per week, it was surprising. It was huge to have that added value to, to our Berry Farmer's Market. And it was huge for our community and it was huge for our vendors as well. So thank you Bern for reminding me.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well. I make it a point to never be gone during the Heritage Days. And after this year, I'll never be gone during Mary Berry Holidays as well. So I'm very impressed. I will make a comment that you had mentioned. You won't say about Santa. It's because everybody knows who Santa is. He's an amazing guy that lives at the North Pole. And for those that want to reach out to him, I believe there's a box down at Wobbie's.
Right out in front of Wobbie's. And tomorrow is the last day to get your letters.
So make sure you get them in.
Letters to Santa so that Santa can write you back in.
Correct. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Tracy.
Thanks Tracy.
Appreciate you.
That takes us to our next item, the discussion of our legislative priorities.
Thank you, Mary. We have, Nick Sherman is here in person with us today and Maggie Lentz is or was online. Oh, there she is. There, I could hear. Thank you. So yeah, Nick, if you would join us. Nick and I had a chance to meet, Nick, Maggie and I had a chance to meet last week. And we sort of downloaded after the, the meeting where the council approved the contract and had a, a chance to talk a little bit about some of our, our game plan for some of what we'll be doing at the Capitol. I know some of the, we talked about some of the meetings we'll be setting up and, and just some of the, the priorities themselves. And so Nick, I don't know if it's just better to turn it over to you and Maggie and take it from here?
Sure. So would it be most helpful to talk about maybe timeline wise, what we're thinking about in terms of meetings and how things are going to roll out? So thanks for having us here. Nick Sherman with Leonheim Public Affairs and my colleague Maggie Lentz is, is on Zoom. We are getting just about two weeks away really from the legislative session starting right at the beginning of January after the new year. At that time, the budget adjustment proposal will come from the Scott administration and be given to the House Appropriations Committee that will start work on it. I think that's the first sort of picture we'll get of the framework for the discussion around a lot of your priorities that you laid out last, last time we were here. So, you know, I think that's the first, the, the first time we'll have sort of a document we can look at and have context for, okay, what, what are the discussions going to be sort of framed around? Leading up to that, I think, you know, what we're going to be trying to do is organize meetings with your delegation, your broader Senate delegation, and a lot of the other representatives and senators who may represent areas that have similar priorities to you. And unfortunately, with the flooding both in July and yesterday, that, that group is growing quickly. So I think, you know, we're going to be looking to set those meetings up in the next couple of weeks. From there, the, the administration will produce its FY25 budget proposal, probably the third week of January. And, and from that, you know, the budget discussions will start in earnest about the next fiscal year's budget. We anticipate that probably most of the discussions around your priorities, you know, flood relief being one of the top ones, that those bills will be the vehicles for those discussions. The House Appropriations Committee is where it starts and they'll work on it and take testimony from interested parties. We'll look for opportunities for, you know, the city to weigh in, both officially with the committee and, you know, opportunities to interface with legislators who are going to be looking at this and making decisions about this at the state Capitol. And, you know, from there, it will go to crossover, which is at the end of February, early March. That's when the House budget will take shape and the House Appropriations Committee will pass their bill. The broader House will approve it and then it will go to the Senate. We can continue from there, but that's, that's probably as far out as we want to look right now.
And I think the only thing I would add to that is that the scope of our work, you know, we want to be hyper-focused on getting funding to help Berry with the catastrophic flooding that's just occurred. So we're your eyes and ears in the building for other things. We're going to report back. We're going to consult on other things. Mainly, we want to be really hyper-focused and get you guys the funding that you need.
Yeah, that was certainly when we met, you know, in my conversation with Nick and Maggie, you know, the most important thing for us to walk out of this session with is operational support to help us recover. So I know there's a lot of things that would be helpful for us to get from the legislature, as there are any given year. But this particular year, it's, it's walking away with some funding to help us stabilize our tax base and help us finalize our budget. You know, to that end, certainly at the staff level, what I've, we have some, some staff members who by duty of their, their work come in contact with the legislature. You know, I've directed them that, hey, we're, we're peeling back. Our priority this year is funding for our operations. Our priority this year is, um, funding for our operations. You know, I know some members have, uh, some staff members have conversations about, um, public safety issues, other topics. All those conversations are now going to flow through, through me and, and Nick because, and Maggie, because our, like I said, our, our, we're tunnel vision on this. And we don't want there to be any confusion about, um, what people hear from representatives from Berry about, um, what they need out of this session. So, um, that's what we're doing on the staff level for sure, to make sure that when someone in Montpelier hears from Aneet and Berry that it's, it's really coordinated on, on that thing we need to walk away with, which is funding.
Yep.
Good. So we're clear on that point. Because, well, I mean, we had a big list.
Yeah.
And, and I want to say, I, I want to backtrack on something I said a couple of weeks ago and we were talking about the budget. And thank you Nicholas and Carol and Don for allowing me to nerd out with you. And so we're, you know, sharing information. I think my comment was something like, gee, I'd be upset, if, if we didn't walk away with at least half a million dollars. Uh, I, I gotta walk that number back because having spent some time with Nicholas and Carol and Dawn, anything less than a million two is going to leave a serious mark on this city.
Yep.
I mean, it, it's, it's that bad. So, you know, I think that's where our focus needs to be. We need to be laser focused on that. These are all, it, it's all important, but it's not a priority right now. What's a priority is maintaining the level of service and maintaining the city that we've worked so hard to build. And that could easily go south on us. So, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'll try not to be so intense.
Councilor Wazak?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to basically echo, um, what Councilor Wazan said for the like, yes, we definitely should have a broader conversation about what larger legislative issues are moving in any given session so that we can as a municipality respond to them. But for the purposes of Leonine, for the purpose of the basically five months that we have, um, this coming year, I, I think a hundred percent of our focus needs to be on direct flood recovery funding. And, you know, I joked last night when I was seeing the weather reports, I was like, well, my number just doubled. So I was at 2.5. So I'm glad that you're bringing me back to reality. But yes, I think that that's the correct approach for this session.
One worry that I have about an overly, uh, narrow focus on flood relief is that there are funding mechanisms in the T bill and the BAA and the, and the large budget. And I've seen many lobbyists take up these legislative platforms that cover a wide variety of things. Like it used to be Karen Horn would get all the legislative platforms. And when she saw a moment in the legislature to talk about an issue that was happening in Bennington or Bellas Halls, because they had adopted, rocking, because they had adopted a comprehensive, uh, uh, list of things that were their priorities, she could elevate that testimony. And of course lobbyists do the same thing when those moments are there. If we don't have that list, that opportunity is not off the table. And I, and I sometimes worry that we haven't been quite as disciplined as we could be and on the same message as, as elected officials and as department heads. So it's great to see that this is cultivating that discipline. But their operational support can flow through many legislative mechanisms, not just a one piece of legislation. And I worry that strategy is all of our eggs in one basket. So that's a, I'll just put that out there that I, I still would like to see this body adopt a legislative platform that covers the, the diversity of tremendous needs facing the city.
Yeah, just to respond to, I, I agree completely with that approach of there's, there's a million ways to get money out of the state government over the course of the legislative session. And I think that like Leonine's team is very aware of that and will be able to hop on those opportunities. And I also agree that I think it's a, we should have a full legislative platform that covers all of the things that we're concerned about. But I think that, you know, we just, we just don't have time to do that before the first week in January. And we need to be clear on what we're asking for in the first week of January. So, yeah.
Respectfully disagree with that. Uh, Representative Williams.
Good, how are you? Uh, just thank you, councilors. Uh, I just wanted to, um, reiterate that I look forward to working with Peter and Leonine, uh, the lobbyists that, uh, the city has contracted with in order to facilitate, uh, an appropriation of one million plus.
Plus, we're doing plus.
I have, I, I've given a preview to Nicholas, but myself and other central Vermont legislators have been working on a, flood recovery omnibus bill, uh, for central Vermont specifically. And we will be meeting to discuss that later, but it, uh, runs the gamut from, um, ERAF funding, BGAAP expansions, tax abatements, revenue, great loss revenue grants, flood mitigation, dam removal, um, lots of other things. That, uh, bill may or may not get broken up into smaller components. It may be duplicated where, um, certain budget narratives are in one piece of legislation and an appropriation is in another. Regardless, um, I can assure you that, uh, flood recovery is top of mind. For myself, I don't want to speak for Peter, but I think he agrees with me. So, uh, I look forward to working and, uh, I, I wish we could be everywhere at once, but we can't. So I think it's a very smart move that we've made, uh, we've contracted with the group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Deering, then Bern Rose?
Just curious where this fits into the Democratic super majority agenda? Is this going to be something that the Democrats are going to be able to get worked on? We know that, that that's something they have a super majority with. So can we get some assistance or is this something that we're going to have to fight tooth and nail for?
I have been providing tours of Berry City to my legislative colleagues all summer and fall. They are acutely aware of the impacts of the July flooding, um, including, uh, Speaker Korwinski and others. And I know that, uh, the flood recovery effort is top of mind along with housing, for, uh, the entire body, uh, House and Senate, Democrat, Republican and Progressive and Libertarian. And so as such, uh, uh, I think everyone understands the need and the, the different mechanisms by which we will need to, um, mitigate and remediate, uh, the flooding impacts.
Thanks.
Bern Rose?
Hi, um, Nicholas, if you have some kind of a cheat sheet for, um, residents, I would look forward to something like that because I do write to, um, people on committees, even if they're not from Berry or they're not from central Vermont. If I see something coming up in a committee, um, anything you could send out to us, uh, to bring more attention and that we Berry citizens could, uh, address also as, um, as our own personal spokespeople, but do that so that we're in tandem with everything else that you're doing. I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks Bern. I don't, Maggie's hand went up. I don't know Maggie's had to respond to Bern's comment?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you Bern for saying that because I think that is something that we, um, missed mentioning, which is that we are eyes, we are ears, we have relationships. We're going to be speaking to people and doing the work on the behalf of Berry. That being said, the most powerful messengers are always going to be, um, the residents of Berry and the people who have lived it. So, uh, you know, grassroots actions are absolutely going to be part of this. I see us putting together really clear action alerts, um, explaining what needs to be said, who it needs to be said to, um, and absolutely involving the community and would be grateful for that support. So, thank you.
So if we have a system for disseminating that information or a place to sign up for it, that you could work on with maybe Nicholas or I'm not sure how, but something like that, that we could, or, uh, like Jonathan does, little, um, updates all the time. You might put them in something like that, working with him. Absolutely. Whatever you can do. Thank you.
Yeah, we will make sure to be transparent and provide updates, um, so that people know what's going on.
And I would just add, um, you know, in addition to residents, um, one of the, the first avenues we talked about and I, I've spoken with our representatives here in the city is, um, you know, we have AFME, Fraternal Order of Police, steelworkers working at, we've already talked to all of those, um, union heads and including some of the state leaders for AFME, for example. So we know that they're ready to stand hand in hand with us, um, to, um, help us make the case in, in Montpelier. Cause as we talked about in our coordinating meeting that, um, you know, that there'll be effective messengers there, people who are on the front line. So, um, in addition to residents, we're, we're making steps to grow our coalition.
Councilor Wazan?
Thank you. So do we need a, a vote of the council or a consensus? You know, we've heard, I don't, I mean, I understand that, that the list, that there are a lot of things on the list. When you talk about homelessness, when you talk about drug addiction, when you talk about recovery, those are all important things. But we're, what we're talking about is what our legislative, and we have to be able to speak to those things. And I think there are many of us here on the council and our representatives who can, and former, who can speak to those things. But I think our priority absolutely has to be operational funds, flood recovery related. I mean, you know, and again, it, I had to get my head into the math. We have an operational problem that is north of seven figures. We cannot tax our way out of it. We cannot borrow our way out of it, period. So I think our priority, as far as I'm concerned, I am absolutely in agreement with the manager. It has to be operational funds related to flood recovery.
And again, I would, I would just impress upon the council that expanding that to include some Berry specific priorities for housing.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
Things like that, because that is what digs us out of the financial hole, this slow bankruptcy that we're going towards. So, um, and if we don't get those investments, if we don't get the T bill investments, if we don't get the housing bill investments, if we don't get the resilience investments, uh, we can't just focus on this. I just say it's incredibly important, but so are the other things.
Right. Well, we're talking about what is the priority? And so priority for me is operational.
I want to see more expensive priorities.
And the rest of those items, again, you know, it's all still important. I mean, realistically, we should have a list that's about 22 items long because they're all important. But we're talking about priorities here. So I think we need to focus and prioritize that list.
I see Representative Anthony.
I, I just wanted to point out that.
Sorry, Peter, if you could.
I just wanted to point out that, uh, every time I've been asked about that, I have insisted that people understand this is also not a one-shot deal. Growing our way out of the grand list is going to take probably half a decade anyway. And so, um, whatever marker one throws down in this particular second year of the biennium, understand that that's a beginning of a process of recovery. It's not the recovery. I, I know people don't want to hear that. Uh, that is to say, people with, with which I deal all the time, they want to hear that because they don't like future commitments, but that's the reality. I, I think you would share that. You don't rebuild a grand list in a year.
No.
Uh, the other thing, which is maybe, uh, an inside baseball, uh, observation that I'm sure Mr. Sherman can appreciate. The governor's budget normally appears a bit earlier, like three weeks. So that changes the dynamic between the executive and legislative branch. Uh, I, this is new territory for the whole crowd. Um, I, I think going to Councilor Deering's question, it really does change. Well, who do we talk to and who's responsible in the end for bringing home the bacon? Uh, because it has changed or will change the legislative and executive dynamic unpredictably. Not that there's any roadmap to do this, but I, I just wanted to point out that the process is somewhat new because the appropriations committee are beginning in February rather than in January, essentially with the administration's proposal, for what it's worth. Uh, thanks and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Councilor Boone?
Maggie had her hand up first, but.
I just wanted to just quickly, um, wanted to, I hope reassure you that we, we do not have tunnel vision. We're going into the building, um, and we're looking to bring funding to Berry. We're absolutely going to be moving beyond the appropriations committee. I think, you know, we're pretty good at having eyes and ears everywhere. And I think we will be looking for every opportunity to help Berry. It's not just, you know, it's not just going to be, um, a line item in the budget.
I really, I appreciate that Maggie. I think sometimes we miss opportunities because we're focused on one big shiny idea and we miss the small incremental or other, other ideas. So, and again, you know, having a multi-pronged strategy with, even if it's prioritized.
Yep. And we have a big team, to be clear. It's not just Nick and I.
So you're looking for a list like, you know, also try to look out for ways to lobby people to modify our charter so that we don't have the school district stuff in there. No, you're not looking for that kind of.
Really low.
Well, no, but I'm.
Let's get with Ledge Council and ELCT about that.
Right, but I, but I mean, like you're looking for, I'm talking about the mayor looking for a list of, of different things. Um, or money for, I, I'm just curious if this is what you're looking for? Like money for the BOR to match the funds for the federal government? Is that what you're? Okay. So, I mean, I, I don't, okay. I don't think that's a problem to try to figure out some sort of list for that. Forward to Nicholas.
Councilor Stokel?
Well, one of my concerns is we can't really do rebuilding. I mean, operations, we really, we desperately need that, true. But we also need infrastructure, infrastructure equipment, infrastructure rebuilding. You know, that, that to me would be a top priority. We can't do the, we can't, we can't build if we don't have infrastructure for it. And we can't manage another flood if we don't do something about the infrastructure we have right now. So that to me is, would be right up there.
Councilor, Representative Williams?
Just one of my priorities, uh, also is an often ignored, uh, element in all this is how quickly does the state deploy the funds that the legislature appropriates and that the budget, uh, when the budget is approved? There have been really unfortunate timelines of six to eight to 10 months or more between a legislative appropriation being made, of the budget being signed off on, and then it being handled as a grant through AHS or the Department for Children and Families, et cetera. So, um, I have been working, uh, with some other of my colleagues in order to, um, figure out ways to expedite and ensure that funds, state funds are appropriated in a timely manner. It doesn't matter how much money, uh, is appropriated to the city of Berry through a formula appropriation or otherwise, if it doesn't get to us in a year. Um, that's simply the truth. Thank you.
Councilor Wazak?
Just one more piece of context slash framing for this conversation is that I'm looking back at the contract that we approved with Leonine. And the two bits that I want to point out, because I think it's what we're talking about, are lobbying, legislative lobbying and lobbying the administration. So under legislative lobbying, this contract reads, Leonine with the city will partner with legislators to draft and introduce legislation that will garner support and funds for Berry's reconstruction and flood mitigation efforts. Doesn't say we're just following the appropriations bill or the state budget or budget adjustments. So it is, so I think that this, the work we're doing with Leonine, this contract, while I, I fully agree, Mr. Mayor, that we should have a list of those projects ready at Nicholas's disposal so that when the legislature says, oh, maybe not in this bill, but maybe in this bill, we can fit that funding there, what falls under those categories? Having those lists, definitely. But I think that the goal that we're all talking about is having a macro view of the different ways that Berry City is going to need support recovering from the flood. And that is flood mitigation, that's infrastructure, that's housing, um, that's utilities, that's capital investment. It's all of that is summarized within the contract that Leonine, as opposed to, for example, the charter thing, right? Like the, the school district thing is just, it, that's just not there. So that's not going to be Leonine's focus. And it's definitely something that as we pass, you know, charter changes, send them to the legislature. Carol will do her yeoman's job until March. She always does lobbying for those changes on behalf of the voters.
I may be around. Do at least do that.
Yeah, doing it anyway after March. Yeah, yeah. But, but I think that we're all articulating the same goal in what we want Leonine to be focusing on in terms of legislative support. And I think, yes, the more details that we can have about those projects ready to go and Nicholas's back pocket. I'd love a big spreadsheet of all of the like, like where's that $30 million capital plan again? Right here. This is what we need. And these are the, the needs that have just been exacerbated because of the hit on the grand list, because of everything that happened, because of the flood. So I, I, I just want to, I think, reassure ourselves that we are really all on the same page here with what we're asking from Leonine and what we're asking from the legislature.
Yeah, that's where I think, I think what I'm hearing is that there's alignment that it might be good to have, uh, a one, one, one or two pager with, you know, those top level projects because we know legislators can only read about a page. Cause they're just inundated all the time.
Oh, and those should be printed in color.
For the record, I, I can read more than one page.
Not during the session.
And they need stories. Uh, and then, and that also illustrates an alignment of interests. So we can say, we're willing to build, we're ready to build a 40 unit. So we can say, we're willing to build, we're ready to build a 40-unit housing development in our downtown for flood impacted households. And we can do that with this many million dollars in assistance. And we're ready to put infrastructure in and put prospect heights. Or we can take the next step if we get assistance to do an environmental assessment and redesign of the infrastructure. And we can, we know that if we replace the Berlin Street Bridge in the trestle, we could, we could save millions of dollars of damage for the water that then spills out over into the surrounding neighborhoods. And I think those concrete projects make a huge difference if we're going to enter this process in a real way, in a much more sophisticated way than the city has in the past.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree, but I would just say if we get all that money for all those projects, but we don't get 1.2 million dollars for operating, we're still going to be, we're going to be doing those projects or we're laying people off, right? So that's.
But is it in the either or?
Well, that's what I, I think that's what the question is. Because if we come out of a session and we get money for a trestle, we get money for some of these other things, will it be successful if we don't get the 1.2, whatever it is for the operations? And that's, that's why I think it's, for me, it's tunnel vision because, you know, we're looking at the spreadsheet every day to make sure that we have a budget that balances and doesn't require staff impact. So that's, that's just the conversation. We have all those needs. And Counselor Boot, and if we get the 3 million we need for the, for the odd, that's a great thing. But if we still also don't get the 1.2 million for operations, that still means we're, you know, that's.
I was just asking if that's what you were looking for. I understand what you're saying. Maybe what the idea could be is we provide you a list and we give it to you and then you tell us, oh, hey, by the way, they're doing this here. You might want to do something. Would that, that might be a better way to look at it.
And I don't think putting out a platform comes at the cost of operational assistance. It just, but, but I do think not putting out a comprehensive list could mean that we're leaving up or we're losing, missing out on opportunities. And we can make it absolutely clear that operational assistance, if we had to pick, this is it. It's operational assistance.
Right, right.
But, but we're missing out on a lot of other opportunities, I feel, if we don't have a list.
I think the, sorry.
Counselor Boot.
I think, I think the concern that you guys are having is that, you know, if we, let's say we do get the money for the auditorium to match the funds from the federal government, you know, the legislature would look at it and say, well, you got those funds, so you feel like we're giving you a lot of money, little Berry city. And I, you know, of course, they should give us a lot of money. There's many reasons why they should give us a lot of money, which I could list. But, yeah. That being said, I can understand what you're saying. I mean, that does make sense, but, you know, having.
Well, we can do both. I mean, I think it's been said, we can walk and chew gum, right?
Correct.
Well, now we have to walk, chew gum and juggle. I think we can do it.
I've tried juggling before. It's not easy. I do have a friend that does juggle fire, though.
These are expert jugglers.
I was going to say, our two experts have their hands up to juggle.
I think, I just want to say that I think part of what we provide and what our role is and what we're supposed to do is advise you on doing that balancing act. And we got to keep our eye on the top goal, but if opportunities present themselves, I see it as our job to kind of say, hey, here's this thing you can, if you, if you have this conversation now or you weigh in now, that could go ways towards helping you with this, you know, other thing that's on your list. And it's kind of, it's on us to make sure that you don't miss the mark with your top priority.
Right.
By, you know, going after something else just because it pops up.
I guess this is not going to be last time. It's not like we're not going to see you now until June.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And, and you know, the, but those budgets, they all interact with each other. When, when the budget adjustment comes out, that's not just the general fund budget. That's the transportation, that's the education, that's the capital budget. I mean, it's all in there together. Different committees look at them, but they're on the same timeline and they all interact. So I think if, if you're not able to walk and chew gum, then we're not doing our job.
And juggle?
And juggle.
And juggle.
Yeah.
Counselor Shombel.
As I'm listening to all of this, I, one of the things that strikes me is that we've hired you folks because you know what you're doing. And, and we're also trusting that Nicholas and department heads and everybody else have communicated what the needs are for the city as well as that 1.4 million, if not more. And at a certain point, I think we have to not sit back, but that we have to listen to the information that starts coming to us because you're operating at a very different level than we are, which is not to dismiss the knowledge you have, Jake. You have phenomenal knowledge as to how government works and how cities work, et cetera. I think that we have to get behind the trust factor and also know what we want in the back of our heads to be able to respond to the information you give us. And, and it's, it's putting, it's just asking us to operate, I think, I think differently from the way we normally operate. You know, we're, we're entrusting our needs to you folks in a big way. I mean, we're part of the decision, but we didn't hire them for nothing.
So in that spirit, do you feel like if you were in a committee and somebody asked them, what's the biggest facility need in the city of Berry, you'd be able to say?
VOR.
VOR, okay.
Going online.
Representative Agol Fady.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks. I just wanted to let the council know and those in attendance tonight that I am 100% committed to helping our delegation and you folks here tonight bring home money for operational costs that have been incurred. And we'll be focusing on that during the legislative session, albeit it is disappointing that a lot of the, or all of the surplus has been spent. So we're going to have a tough row to hoe, but we'll see what unfolds as we're in the session coming up.
Thank you. Thank you, Gina.
And I just wanted to quickly say that we're there just as much to support you as the delegation too. So, you know, we're there to help, however you need.
So next steps. I mean, obviously, we've, we talked a little bit about what the priority has been, but we haven't actually, well, we sort of prioritize. I hope we all agree that flood recovery, operational revenue related to flood recovery has got to be the top priority. And then, you know, we talk, we have more on the list that we need to prioritize. So I think we need to do our work. And how many items would you suggest? I mean, like I said, it could be 22 items long. Let's see, bus service, yeah, I'd like more of that. No, I mean, how detailed do you want to get? At a certain point, we've got to stop and be practical.
I mean, honestly, from our perspective, the length of the list doesn't matter so much as the prioritization of the list.
Gotcha.
We're happy to look at everything because to the mayor's point, I mean, something might pop up and if we have it on the list and we know what it is, we can act quickly on it if the opportunity arises.
And we need to have that to you by when?
It would be great, great to have it by January 3rd if possible, but as soon as possible.
Awesome to do it tonight, January 3rd.
And I do think, just to answer your question, next steps, from our perspective, we are working to sort of identify and help bring together a coalition of like-minded lawmakers who are dealing with similar situations and will be a coalition to support, support these priorities for this community and for others as well.
Perfect. We'll keep up.
And so as, you know, as the clerk just mentioned, our next scheduled meeting was the ninth, you said?
Yep.
So if we have conversations between, because like, you know, not everything's going to be decided between the sixth, the third and the ninth, would the ninth be the 10th? Assuming we approve something on the ninth, get it to the morning of the 10th?
Absolutely.
Be Nicholas, okay. So then what I would suggest is, and please shoot the messenger, Nicholas, you could bring 10 to 15, you know, DPW garage, BOR matching fund, some of the big ticket items that could really down the road help us. You could circulate a list to us ahead of time before the meeting on the ninth. We could all look at it and say, maybe this thing, maybe that thing. That's just one suggested route of proceeding. I mean, I just think that's cleaner than all of us said. We've been sending each of us individually, Nicholas, a lot of lists over the past that he's then had to synthesize. So I think if we start with a list from Nicholas, that might be a little cleaner.
Right, but we're, we need to do a little work before the ninth. I mean, for this council to come in here and for me to say, okay, well, here's my priorities. I hope we're all going to agree. I think we all agree on what number one is. So not a lot of discussion there. But if we have a list of 10 items and we've got to go counselor to counselor, what is your, you know, how do you rank these final nine? And I may rank them this way. You may be 70% with me, but you got, we're going to be here all night. I mean.
Well, I mean, we're on our, we're on our four now.
We won't get through it in 10 hours. So my point is, I don't see the harm in, if we distribute a list, we know what our number one is. We could actually rank them on our own. Nicholas could take the feedback and kind of help us out. It might help us.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
It was just my first draft of a process, I don't really.
And we got a little Christmas break coming up, so got to get some work done. So if we could do that, Nicholas, I think that would really be helpful, if we could do that.
So you, you're, I'm sending a list that you will be prioritizing.
Yes.
Okay, that is correct. And our next budget, and our next meeting is the budget seminar, just FYI.
That is correct. Getting pizza for that?
It's a, I'm, all a special meeting, you know, if we have to.
Could meet on the second.
A lot, yeah.
Right.
Without me.
That's all right, once we get your list, up to us anyway.
All right. So that takes us to upcoming business. We have our budget seminar.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everybody. We're really excited to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
So we have a budget meeting on our next meeting on the ninth. We'll do adoption of a prioritized legislative list and that's it, right?
Yeah, I think there may be a consent agenda item. We may need a technical amendment to the grants management policy for us to be able to accept FEMA subgrants on a rolling basis so that we don't have to wait for the cash to roll in. So we may, looking at amendment to that, to just carve FEMA grants out of the acceptance part of that.
Anything else? All right. Oh, Counselor Shombel.
At some point, I would love to see get put back on the table somewhat of a discussion about how to condemn those two buildings in the middle of town.
Of the new Berry.
I mean.
Nation proceeding.
There's just, I can't imagine a whole lot of cleanup took place in there during the flood.
Or anything wrong.
And God knows what's lurking underground there. Just saying.
When is White and Burke, what are we, what's, and when you think about the work plan in the coming five months, are you thinking about there being a TIF conversation?
Yeah, so.
Kickoff is tomorrow.
Yeah, the kickoff is tomorrow, the working group, yeah.
The action group.
The action group, thank you. The group.
And then, but in terms of anything coming to council, nothing?
Well, I think we'll know more after, after that kickoff.
Okay, all right, cool. Stay tuned, Mel. Okay, if there's nothing else on upcoming items, the roundtable, Counselor Stockwell.
I'll pass.
Counselor Shombel.
I'm glad we came out as easily as we did last night. And again, I remain incredibly grateful to all the work that people did to make, to keep things at bay as quickly as possible. So thank you to all.
Counselor Wazak.
Yes.
Echo the sentiments. Yeah, whatever. Echo what you just said. I took a picture of Russell Tucker, Tucker, cleaning out the, the brook down by Matheson School. And he was there almost on the entire.
And he stayed on, he was one of the five that stayed on till, I believe, nine they were done.
Yeah, so super thankful for our, for our staff, for all of them, for what they do. And with that, I'll pass.
Counselor Lozon.
Likewise, thank you to the first responders, but also just to the neighbors and the trades people who came out and got some pumps operational and running. And, you know, when folks figured out that they were okay, they went to work helping their neighbors. Counselor Wazak, you did that today. So thank you very much for doing that with, Jonathan was with you, no? So thank you for doing, where were you cleaning?
Alley.
Oh, no way.
Yeah.
You just want free pool. All right, never mind the note.
I mean, yes, I would like free pool.
But thank you to everybody who responded. I want to remind people in January, there is a special round of downtown tax credits that's rolling out, not a lot of time. I think it has to be in the eighth or ninth. It's, there's not a whole lot of time. But if you own a building downtown and you experience some flood damage and you've got to affect repairs, maybe the downtown tax credits could help you. And I'm sure that program will be looking more closely at flood damaged communities and projects related to that. Riverbed maintenance, that's what I prefer to call it rather than dredging. Yesterday's event was not a rainwater event, it was a stormwater event. Our stormwater system simply got overwhelmed. And that's why the surface water that you saw on Main Street, it was bubbling out of the storm system, not falling out of the sky. I live next to the Edgewood Brook, a consistently culvert that has badly failed or badly failed in the last flood. You know, I'm just, I'm absolutely convinced the more I look at these events, and maybe I'm just going to sound like an old guy, but I've lived here for a long time. I've lived next to the Edgewood Brook for 25 years. And I've watched it through a lot of rainstorms, but I've watched it over the past two years as development has occurred outside the city. I've watched it change. And it's okay if it wipes out Nelson Street, it's not hitting my house, but it's jumping on Park Street. And it keeps jumping on Park Street. The last time, it, well, it jumped this last time, but during the July event, that's what went down and got the, went down Jefferson Street and got the library and got, got the, you know. So my point is, we used to have folks from A and R who would come in and they would give a presentation and say, this is why you can't dredge the river. This is why you can't do it. I'm not interested in hearing that. I'm interested in hearing about thoughtful riverbed maintenance. There are going to be trade-offs. You know, there's always trade-offs. I realize that, but just looking at how people are discussing this issue and again, looking at what happened yesterday, it was a stormwater event. We just didn't have the capacity to move that much rain through, so our stormwater, our storm system backed up. But I think we just have to get a little bit more serious about riverbed maintenance and in any discussion we have about mitigation, you're not going to find me listening if there isn't something about riverbed maintenance. So, thanks.
Representative Anthony.
And it happens, I am absolutely certain that the mantra that you referred to has changed already, in my view, my understanding. But let me just put a little refinement on your observation. I agree totally. When you see them bubbling up, the runoff system, the rainwater system is incapable of carrying what's coming down from the uplands. The interesting thing is, I'm not sure that it's only riverbed capacity. That is to say, in order for the riverbed increase in capacity to cure that problem, there's got to be no impediment for the volume to get to the river. That's a piping problem as well as the dredging problem. And I discovered very recently that there is statutory authority for people, for municipalities to create what amounts to a stormwater utility district. At the moment, we have no funding source and we have no. At the moment, we have no funding source and we have no plan to handle stormwater. What I don't know is how cooperative that has to be with other jurisdictions. But it's worth exploring because it allows to essentially create a mechanism and a framework to cover the piping costs, never mind the partnership with the state of Vermont on the dredging side.
Agreed.
Oh, you want to loop back to this?
I really do want to loop back to this. I stopped, I stopped.
This is like the non-public hearing.
Either, please don't leave.
Deering's left.
Deering's left.
I just, you know, again, spent a couple hours last night on Second Street with some residents that were really, really nervous about what was going on. They were in the middle of Second Street, so they weren't on the end where it did get flooded out. Just the anxiety that the people have over what's going on. And then also the anxiety that some people have about them hearing about the governor coming to take their house. And it's nice to, you know, to really make that clear that, you know, eminent domain is not something that that we're going to do. The people are going to have a say in the the process for the redevelopment of the North End. And just to talk about more of those things this evening and to have dates for our ward meeting and, you know, the meeting at the social hall. I think it's important. So I'm excited to have that engagement process. And I think the people really need to just come out and speak their minds so that way they know that things are what they are and there are no mistakes about that. I'll end with that. Thanks, sir.
Thanks. I just wish everybody a happy holidays and a happy new year. And we'll see, see everybody on January 3rd and safe travels for everyone.
Move to your.
Oh, not the 3rd, the 10th. The 9th, I'm sorry, this is too late.
It's okay.
Whenever, whenever we meet.
Whenever it is, Jake, we'll be there.
So I will second Counselor Lozon.
We can talk afterward, Mr. Stone. No.
No, we're not.
All in favor, say aye.
All right, now we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thanks for showing up.
Thanks, Hopper and Gina for coming. Thanks, Maggie.
Thank you.
Night, Dave. Good night, Herb.
Thank you so much. Hi, Teddy.